The meeting session. Joint session of the finance committee regarding. Rob, do you wish to say anything before we start?
Oh, glad we're involved.
All right. So I'm just go through.
Yeah, the if you notice a standing meeting before every town meeting. And the primary focus is the motions, but if there's other states craft or things that, you know, just to make sure we're all on the same page, has a walkthrough on Wednesday with Brian Ritter. Make sure the physical setup is exactly what we want Casey to give him. The difference of thousands men about two weeks ago, so we'll make sure that's reflected. Nothing is really the same as it's been. But yeah, the primary focus is the motions unless there's other like associated state draft for next Monday.
Hi, Tim.
Morning, how are you? Good, 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 good evening, sorry. It's been a long day.
Yeah, sorry. All right, so Rob. Did you want anything before we start, Tim?
No, I've been in touch with Angus about the motions and the I reviewed the warrant ahead of time, so I'm. I think we can just proceed at this point.
Okay. Um, so water budget adjustment. Well, Article one, yeah, I have not been informed that there are any reports that need to be made, but.
Oh, I I had told you that we would.
Right, but are there any others besides?
Yeah, I actually have a running list for you.
You have a running list for me? So am I gonna get that running list before I?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, I actually just got in. Two more today.
Okay.
So I'll send you what I have.
All right, and do when they ask for uh having a report. Do they specify whether they want to give it under Article one or whether they will defer to a particular article?
Yes.
They do, okay, so I'll have that.
The majority under Article one and then I think. Open space, for example, wants to speak in.
Right, that's.
A level.
That's a conclusion.
No, I agree as well.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm sorry, Randy, but.
That's fine.
We pass a Article one, like it doesn't count, but it gets to be a little bit of a.
Yeah, I knew Jim was.
Roughly how many people on this?
Uh, I think I have seven right now.
Wow.
That's a lot.
Now people want to talk.
We can do that, they'll they'll get a quorum. They can entertain the crowd and ask people.
All right, could you add the portable hazard to our list running out tonight's the deadline?
Roughly eight.
Yep.
I remember there was a deadline. But I I left it open. I mean, I will update anything more, but. We'll do what we have now.
I mean, historically, I thought that up until the time of the start of the meeting that. Or up until the motion, actually.
Okay, are we done with Article one? Article two, water budget adjustment. Now, is the motion that I have here, which is ten thirteen, so that's.
Yeah, that's what.
That is the proposed motion.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, under Article three, I'd like a few minutes to. Say something, but. My Article two is.
Anything else on Article two? All right, Article three.
Okay, here's what I'd like to say. We have this ongoing discussion on this. About what to do when we want to modify the amount that was appropriated in the previous year. And we talked about the language between amend or change or increase or decrease. And so I'd just like to make clear, because I don't think I have ever made it clear. Um, what my feeling is upon this. So the article that I have here is says to increase the following line items. Uh, on Article three. Um, and it is better than what we started out with. But when we continually refer back to. The annual town meeting or a special town meeting, it doesn't matter, where something was passed. Um, those line items or whatever were motions. Because of the way that we do. The omnibus budget. So I stand there and I say, uh, I'm going to read every line. And we're not going to discuss every line independently, but every line is a motion. And then when we. And if you if there's someone who wants to actually discuss that line, you call call hold. When we've gone through all the lines, we'll go back and pick up those on which there was a hole where you want some discussion. But all the time we're doing this, there is a motion on the floor. It's not clear because of the way we do the other things, but when I read that line. Even if there's no hole on it. That becomes a motion on the floor. Now, my problem with our struggles over how to word all this is. That my feeling is that we cannot amend a motion from a previous meeting that's closed. That motion was made at that meeting and it's done. And it passed or didn't pass or whatever, and the line item budget is just a bunch of motions. So we can't amend those, we can change, we can change what we appropriated, that that's fine, but we can't amend the motion. Now, this is better, so I'm I'm really kind of. Not thinking that maybe this is appropriate, but I'd like.
Well, but an extra one it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this.
And so I'd like to, I'd like to discuss this in there, I'd like to have a chance to have. Town council or the selectmen or whoever weigh in on why you think amend. Is such an important part of this process, because we're really not amending. We're really either appropriating an extra amount. Or we're taking away some, and the taking away. I I was discussing this the other day with Angus and Jim and Rob. The taking away doesn't have to happen, you could just not spend the money and and that's fine, it goes back to free cash. But apparently there's some need to have some sort of a running. Idea of how much we've expended over the years and so to to keep that honest. We want to have the amount honest, whatever. And there are ways to do that, but amend is not a way to do that. Uh, we we can't amend what we did at a closed meeting. So we, that's that's what why I'm concerned about the language. Because it really needs to be clear that. This is a new. Appropriation or taking away, the taking away bothers me a little bit, but then the the new appropriation is a new appropriation. Um, and so I'd like to know why it seems to be so important to to everyone else except me. That we amend what we did last time, because I I'd like to help get language that works.
So does the increase and decrease language work?
Do you? The increase and decrease language works, it's a little bit awkward. Uh, let's see, it's Article four. So when it decrease, okay, so you want. This motion says amend the following line items, okay? It's awkward for me, because amend the following line items means you're gonna change what's in there. If it's an increase, it's pretty clear, you're just gonna raise the appropriation. But if it's a decrease, are we actually gonna go back and decrease the appropriation? Are we gonna go through the whole business with the with having the budget certified and all that because we decreased the?
Well, the so until the tax rate is set, which happens more like around Thanksgiving, that's when the. That's when we kind of lock in the budget. So the value of getting the, you know, this kind of housekeeping done at the fall town meeting is that we're not. We don't end up raising money that we don't need, but.
But it works to your concern.
Yeah, but you know, I had in the in the motions that we had put together, I did use the word adjust in Article four. Uh, we sent it over to Tim's office last week. He responded with a number of markups, including changing adjust to amend. And, you know, in the issue starting the night with a clean slate, I had just sent his red lines. Uh, knowing that that word would be a focus, and so I had asked him. You know, is that a, is there a legal reason why adjust doesn't work? And I don't know if adjust works for you, I think that was one of the suggestions he'd made when we made it two weeks ago, but.
From my point of view, and this is, I I mean, I don't have a a silver bullet here to tell you to use this language. Maybe somebody else does. From my point of view, what we appropriated for the budget in the spring. Is appropriated. We closed the meeting, adjourned, that money was appropriated then. Now, we find ourselves in a situation where we need to make changes. This is not the first time this has happened, this is every time I've ever been flatterated to me, this has happened that we have to tweak. In fact, what happened was years ago. The state used to get the cherry sheet out in a timely fashion. So that we knew what we were gonna have for state funding for various things. And various people could put together a rational budget. All of a sudden, now all of a sudden, gradually over the years, the state stopped doing the cherry sheet in a timely fashion. So by the time we got to the annual town meeting, we had no idea what we were gonna get from the state, so. The selectmen had to put together as best they could. Some sort of a budget that reflected what they thought might happen, and they usually went to a zero based budget. With, well, not zero based budget, they usually just defaulted to last year's. Knowing that they would probably get more money from the state, but they didn't know how much. And so, okay, we're gonna have to come back in the fall. And we're gonna have to give more money to some people and maybe take money away from other group. And that's the way this whole thing kind of evolved. Now. In terms of how you fix. The 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 motions from town meeting. Um, we've done various things, you know, we've rescinded. Stuff from previous meetings, we've we've gone through bunches of different attempts at finding language that works for everybody. To to do this kind of thing, but it really is a a a difficult problem. But my feeling is that amend the line item or amend motion or amend the. Even we even get amend the article, which county can't even amend an article, that's. That's verboten. Um, is not the way to go. And so we can either just make a new appropriation. Which is fine, you know, I I move to appropriate blah, 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 for. Pentucket School, blah, blah. And it just gets added on to the.
And then how would you handle the decrease?
The decrease is the problem. And the de- and that only comes about because of the need to have this. This historical.
Right.
Account of where the budget went. Now, this is. Forgive me. I used to have to do budgets. And there was always this. Argument. About if you only take your last year's budget and just. Tweak it and send it back in, you're not really thinking about what you really need, you're thinking about, well, how can I tweak last year's budget and sew it? And the powers that be above me used to always say, we need to do zero based budgeting. We need to go back to first principles, how much money do you really need? For all of these things and forget what you did for the last fifteen years, just talk about what you need for this. The point of that was supposed to be that you would avoid just. Putting in excessive things for stuff you don't need or whatever, you would have to really think about what you wanted. And that doesn't work either, so.
This article is actually about specific assessments. That we have to recognize whether we like it or not, so.
Yeah.
This this is a little bit different.
Well, but for the decrease then. The decrease is strictly based on this need to have historical, because you could just simply leave it where it is. And not expend the money and nothing would happen.
Right, understood, it's still an assessment and we've gone through decreasing in Article two. Increasing in Article three. And so what I would hope that town council could comment on is. Since Article four has both increases and decreases. Instead of amend, what is the acceptable language?
Again, I so I can, I can, I I can appine if you guys are all set.
Yeah.
And so I think I under. So in my opinion, the difference in wording between adjust and amend is not material. Or increase or decrease for that matter. I think. The point Casey that you're trying to make is that you can't amend a motion that was passed at a prior town meeting, and that's correct. We're not trying to amend a motion, we're simply trying to amend the amount that was appropriated. And I see no reason why you, why town meeting, a subsequent town meeting. Cannot do that. And I agree that there's multiple ways to do that. One is to say, you know, for instance, if you want to appropriate more money. To the Penn Tucket capital assessment, right? You could just raise and appropriate. Um, another twenty thousand and with no explanation. I think the reason for doing it this way is to provide some context to the voters that. You you've already appropriated one point one, two, three million to that um for that assessment. We're looking to increase it by. I don't know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Um, and the same goes for the decrease, you could very easily not do anything and just not spend that. Thirty thousand dollars and there would be no penalty, no, no impact whatsoever. But I think um. Probably the most compelling reason is just for historical accuracy, so from year to year. And I understand that maybe that's not legally significant, but. From the to the town's finances and how they budget in future years. I think it is important to have an accurate understanding of. What was appropriated in the in the prior fiscal year, so. I I don't want to go on and on about this, because, you know, for me, amend or adjust, I. I default to amend because it's a standard term that we use all the time and it's it's. But I'm not gonna die, i- if you want to use increase or decrease. I'm not gonna get in your way.
Okay, but as far as this article goes, we have both increases and decreases, so again, I'll ask. Is adjust appropriate?
Adjust is appropriate, yes.
Thank you.
Or modify, if that, I mean, I think amend speaks to a motion at that.
Yeah, yeah, so so we want to agree that whether it's proper or not, we don't want to use.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so 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 Tim. Uh, you you said, uh, okay to adjust, uh, um. Anybody, anybody else have another word that they want to blow by or?
Well, I I mean, I just have a slightly different train of thought and I'll throw it out and if if you think it makes sense, then say so, but. Why don't we just, why doesn't it say something like, um, uh, I I move to um. To appropriate the following sum, um. For the purpose of. Adjusting, so so you're not, you're not changing a previous motion.
Doesn't work when you have to deduct the end and end.
Well, well, does it just, you look at the net. You you look at the net and then you say, and the net is made up, or you 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 decrease one by. Five dollars or ten dollars, nine dollars and. Like nine, nine thousand dollars. Yeah, nine thousand, sorry, nine thousand dollars. Um, you know, you you look at the net and that's, you know, so your motion is. To 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 appropriate the net amount and then you explain what the net is comprised of. And then that's.
Or use or use or use the word adjust as this whole change to the.
Yeah, I I think either is fine, let's let's make a decision and respond.
Yeah.
Adjust, okay, everybody okay with that? Are you saying adjust the entire, the entire appropriation, not the individual line items?
As written here, so.
Yeah, just as. So as written in the.
Yeah, so just instead of then say adjust.
Just say adjust.
The finance.
So just can go longer now, yes, I I was concerned when it. Because we do, in fact, vote on individual line items, we don't invite on, we don't. We don't vote on every little thing every department's gonna do, but there are line items that we vote on, and I didn't want to lose that sense of. Things have been appropriated for specific lines. Um, I think that works, what do you think, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I understand your point, Casey, but. At at this point, we have an approved budget for FY twenty-four, it's in place. We're not talking about the individual motions and the holds and and all that, we're talking about the whole budget that's already been approved. And we're now looking to adjust or amend, whatever word you want to use. Um, we're not looking to go back in time and and amend any motions. I think we're looking to amend what's already been approved and appropriated by. Uh, the annual town meeting, so I'm I'm fine with using the word adjust.
Thank you.
So let's use that in Article three as well. To be consistent.
Got to be using Josh in both, sure.
Yeah, okay. So we've done those. Article five, pension liabilities stabilization.
So this, and it should be clear to the town. That what we're doing is appropriating new monies in some cases. Over and above what we appropriated in the spring.
Oh, what are you talking about, Article five?
No, I'm telling you, we use the word adjust.
Well, it says right here, decrease, increase, spells it right out.
Right, but. When we do the line item budget. I I, please bear with me, I know this is painful, but you know, it's important to me that the town understands what's happening. We appropriated. Amounts in the spring for these various line items. And those amounts. Go into what our tax rate is gonna be. So raise and appropriate has an effect on our tax rate. Transfer from free cash or transfer from stabilization does not. But raise and appropriate does. So now what we're going to do is raise and appropriate more money in some cases. And then another case is, I don't know what happens to the money that we're getting rid of, I mean, this is very, a a bit of an awkward situation.
Goes into the same point, goes into the same point.
It gives, reduces the, okay, so that's. Yeah, so it just reduces the appropriation by. An appropriate amount, so that's fine, as long as that, as long as that's clear that, you know, we're appropriating new money in some cases. And we're reducing the appropriation in other cases, and so our tax rate is gonna change.
I think the rationale.
It could be by three cents, but you know.
Rational also explains that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, what about the Article five, pension liability stabilization fund, any questions or thoughts on that?
Okay, that's still two thirds to get out of the stabilization fund.
So this is to to put, this is to put money into the stabilization.
You don't have to do two thirds to get in anymore, we just to get that, fine.
Is that right, Tim?
That's correct, you need a. Yeah, it's correct, you just need a majority vote to to transfer funds into the the pension liability fund.
One thing I could have asked upfront in terms of who's making the motions.
Oh, right.
Yeah, let's, should we do that as we go along?
I think we should, yeah.
All right, Article two, that I mean, the water. Right? Article two is a water fund?
Yeah, I think, um.
Yeah.
By a board of water commission.
All right, and then what about? The omnibus budget.
Do you want the board to be making all the board sponsored articles? A and B, do you want that to be a single board member or do you want it to be a, in which case you don't need to decide tonight, you could just say the board.
What do you, what do you think, I think it's.
Okay, you're you doing it.
Thank you.
All right, I think it's a little silly, just change the microphone.
I don't know, I think I think it's simple for one person, but I don't think it's exactly a deal.
All right, TBD.
But it is the select board.
Yes.
The sponsor now will be the select board.
TBD?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Rob, I sent you the.
First, this is an address to pick up on, I sent you adjustments from the the score sheet you had.
But it's all, it's all.
If it was after a certain point in time, Jim, I ain't looking.
No, I know.
Thank you.
All right, same for Article four, pension liability, is that the same, and then select board?
Yeah.
All right, so Article six. Potential public wealth yields. Any questions on this? Um, this would also be select board, okay?
Yeah.
Right, Article seven, assessing consultants.
This was sponsored by the Board of Assessors, so we can give them the opportunity if they prefer. We can offer them. We'll offer it to Christians group.
All right, Article eight.
So we're good with that for seven?
It's gonna be the Board of Assessors if they agree. And somebody will let me know if they don't agree.
All right, public safety recording equipment. Oh, can the chief do it? So it'll be the select board then.
Okay, enough of her, Casey acknowledges them.
You can't.
He can make a motion.
You can't make a motion, he can speak.
All right, same thing on the gas meters. And Steve Nolan, trailer. Oh, Article eight, nine, and. Any other questions on those articles before we move on, we've all been through this a number of times. Article eleven, invasive species management. So this being a conservation commitment.
Uh, so the Open Space Commission wanted to speak on eleven, twelve, and fourteen, if you really want to let them make a motion.
This is one of these reports. Are they gonna kind of, you know, create ones or they need three different reports?
No, it's it's the, it's three separate items, three separate motions, but the.
They give one report?
I believe they want to give a report for each article.
Oh, for each, okay.
Because they are different in in purpose.
And they're gonna make a motion for each, with that.
That's what, it's, so it's eleven and twelve?
And fourteen.
And, oh, and fourteen, okay, so there's a report from whom?
Open space.
Open space, so why wouldn't this be the conservation commission, they're managing the open, the invasive species program?
Um, I believe it's Carol Decker has been helping on it, and so she was willing, she longed to speak on it.
Do these people understand that this is not a thirty minute report?
Yeah. You're cutting it down to twenty-eight minutes.
So do you have, so we have any concerns about? The conservation commission not making these motions?
Anybody can make a motion, I mean, you know, anybody can stand up and make a motion and. It's perfectly okay, um, it may have.
Carol, Carol has been involved in the sort of invasive species or invasive working room. And, you know, Carol has been. I'll say the most active, knowledgeable. Um, and active and knowledgeable member of that group. In addition, there was one adjustment that Michelle recommended for Article twelve. Yeah, um, it would be a land steward program, several steward program. Uh, so it's an invasive, invasive species intern slash steward program currently. Asked that we make the adjustment land steward program, so it involves not just invasive species, but steward in the invasive species.
So the motion is gonna change? And it doesn't change.
Uh, it would add the word land in front of steward.
Let's see, stewards.
Where, and you mean up in, up in the title?
Article twelve? No, no, no.
Oh, second.
It's only in the title.
No, it says invasive species intern slash steward, it should say land steward. That was in her original request and somehow we all got it.
Okay, is there any difference, substantive difference? Uh, between an invasive species intern and a land steward intern?
Yes.
So that means that this motion may not be in order.
I mean, they're doing both, it's part of.
Yeah, but you have to look, you have to look, you have to look at the article.
Yeah, it's in the article.
Is it in the article? No, it's not in the article, land steward is not in the article. How different is an invasive species intern and a land steward, I don't.
I mean, they're both interns working under the conservation agent.
And it will be the same person then.
It's just a question of the title?
It's just a question of the title and what they would be doing in a sense of.
Is there any difference in how much they would be paid or? Is there any difference in how much they would be paid or what their duties would be or anything like that?
No.
And it's no difference from from what was, from what was in the article or the article backup.
It's probably not gonna cause any kind of big issue, but you know, it doesn't, if it, the article doesn't come in land steward.
It probably doesn't even need to be in there.
It doesn't, yeah.
So should we strike it from the motion?
It's not in the motion. She's asked for.
No, she wants.
Stewards, she wanted.
Stewards in there, stewards in the article. I have the article.
Oh, the article says steward. And what I have, they both say steward.
Yeah, you're not gonna add land. We're spending that corrupt.
Yeah.
So what? I'm now confused. Which word are we removing? We're not adding.
The motion will mimic the article that you guys.
All right. Any other thoughts on eleven and twelve? It would be good if you would communicate or find out from Carol. I don't think a separate report is needed for each.
Sure.
Of those two, or if it is, a very brief one. All right, Article thirteen previous year under bills.
Okay, this one's the one we, we had some problems with this. Um. My understanding from previous. Uh, town meetings is that if the money had been appropriated in a timely fashion. But it simply, the bill wasn't paid, then it only requires a simple majority. If the money was not appropriated in a timely fashion, and so we're now stuck with this unpaid bill that just cropped up, you know? Then it requires a nine tenths vote. I need help from town council on this one. I. So I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I would agree with that assessment, Casey. I I. And this one, I'm not sure Angus and I talked about it briefly a week or two ago, and um. I concur with with the opinion you you just made. Uh, it it does depend on whether a sufficient amount was appropriated to pay this bill. Or like you said, whether it cropped up at the last minute and no funds had been appropriated.
Well, like you said, you you could have expended all available funds and then these bills came in. And we don't really quite know that. So the question is, do you want to just go nine tenths or you want, you know, we we've all kind of agreed to go nine ten?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be.
Tim, I think that was your advice when we spoke was just, just.
I think the town is used to my saying that it's gonna take nine tenths. So I don't think it's a big deal, but.
No, and and your point's correct, except that you'd have to then go back and make sure that you didn't run out of funds, blah, 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 blah. That that wasn't anticipated, right, or blah, 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 blah.
All right, all right. Okay, Article fourteen, um, my question on this is. Do, does this article have to be read entirely and then the motion have to be read again? I think in the last meeting. You allowed the motion to just refer to the article.
You know, this is, this is an interesting question, and it doesn't. More in a lot of discussion. A lot of towns allow. People to say something totally inappropriate, which is move the art. Well, we don't vote on articles, we vote on motions, so. Um, the, another way to look at it is to say. I moved the action delineated in Article fourteen, so now it is a motion, but you didn't have to repeat. The whole nine yards. We've even done in 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 our town meeting, I moved what the moderator said, you know, it's just to get around having to. So I'm open to any kind of a, a solution that keeps us from having to read this.
Twice.
But, but I moved the article. It's not one of the things I'm hoping to.
All right, Tim, do you have any suggestions?
I don't have suggestions. So I, I think I've seen at town meetings, uh, motions to waive the reading of the article. All those favor, that way the article doesn't be read and then the motion would be read.
Okay.
Does that come up for each article or is that an omnibus motion?
I can't recall. I I feel like, but I don't, I, it could probably be either, but I'm suggesting it just for this one.
Just for this one?
Well, actually, there's others later that are kind of lengthy too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only one.
So we'd have to have somebody posted who, because this has never happened in less than every, so there's not gonna be anybody standing there just dying to get up and say. I moved to waive the reading. You'd have to do it. Um, so.
What is the problem with the way Casey outlined it, you know, because I I I I move. Um. In, you know, to support what what the article.
Maybe the article doesn't, among other things, the article doesn't specify which bucket of CPA money is coming from, where they motioned about.
Okay, okay, then that's a good, that's a good, okay, yeah, but it just strikes me that by the time if we're, if we're, if we're having. A separate vote to to approve. To ex, we have to explain why we're having a second vote and then have a second vote. Just just read during that.
Yeah, I think if you're gonna skip reading either the article or the motion, you're better off skipping the article, because everyone's got it right, or do not have the motion. In writing in front of them.
So you would move to waive the reading of the article?
Waive the reading of the article.
Yeah.
And all those in favor, and then once that passes, then it would jump, I believe, right to the motion.
Okay, that's something that is, the. Bye. What we always do, wherever you're going. Um, after I normally read the article. I ask for the recommendation of the finance committee. Now, the finance committee is not giving the long-winded. Recommendations now.
Sure, maybe this year.
But they do, but they do by law have to give a recommendation, so, um, so we can't just skip the finance committee recommendation. So now I've. So it's now, you're gonna. The motion's not on the floor yet. I haven't read the article, and now you're gonna move to waive the reading of the article. Gets to be an awkward. Um, how, I don't see what you're talking about, so let me just, where where does the motion differ from, unless I have an. Antiquated motion?
No, no, you don't. So it's, it's, they both refer to seventy five thousand dollars. The motion has this additional language with, you know, with seventy three, five, twenty nine from the Open Space Reserve. And one oh one, four seventy one, the undesciated fund balance. Substantively, that's really the difference between the article and the motion. And that certainly does matter, because that, that's.
Return to Article fourteen?
Correct, yeah.
So do I have an old list of motions, maybe? I don't see anything about.
It's in the second, next to the end of the second line.
Tim, do you have any thoughts on this?
You don't see anything about what Casey.
Oh, okay, I got it. So I, I see.
Yeah, it's a, it's a matter of preference. A lot of towns will waive the reading of all articles because they are printed. And that's typically if the motions are lengthier, like, like this one, for instance. But you do wanna, I think, notice and understanding is important. So one way. Either through the article or the motion, I think the voters need to know what they're voting on. As opposed to just assuming everybody's read it and knows. I think that's not a good practice.
Yeah. My preference would be to just. Bite the bullet. I'll read the article. Somebody can make the motion. Because we, this is, this is not normal procedure. And if you start getting into another motion to waive the reading and all that kind of stuff, then we get into why is this and all that kind of stuff. We could, we could spend too much time on that and lose the whole benefit.
Or not, you just read the motion instead of the article.
Yeah, I I would prefer to do that.
No, I can't read the, I can't read the article, the motion. I have to read the article. Or have it waived, but. Um.
Yeah, FinCom gives a recommendation after the motion is made?
No. FinCom can speak after.
But, uh, so if we waive the article, FinCom could address it, and then you go to the motion?
Are there any other ones that are like this that are?
Yeah, there's the zoning ones that are.
But they're, they're. Zoning ones we don't do anyway, because we say it's in the FinCom. So I don't even read the whole zoning article thing unless we've changed it, which I should look again.
How do we get away with it on zoning? What we're talking this stuff?
Oh, actually, I'm looking at the zoning. They're really not, I actually, the COA revolving fund, that's, that's lengthy, that's in terms of the article.
Well, and the, and this, in this case, so this is not the same thing, because in this case, if I read the article. It contains all the information they need. So if someone were to just move, I move what the. What the motion, what the article says. We just found, you can do that, then it would, it would cover everything. The problem is, in this case, the article doesn't include as much information. As the motion.
I believe we had, I, we had the later note of reading at the last, it's not on current, we've done it recently.
Well, I don't think people are gonna be terribly upset about it, but it's just a.
And then he had the FinCom make the recommendation and then.
All right, let's try it. But you went away from motion or wa- waive the reading of the art?
Yeah, select board will waive the reading of the article. I think it's something wrong. You're saying in the interest of speaking, if you'd like to read the reading of the article.
I'm just standing there like a moron, waiting for somebody to say, don't do your thing.
We'll read the lengthier, more informative.
Uh, motion instead of.
Because the article is binding anyway, the article is.
Whatever it was, I just read the article or the motion to myself in a minute and twenty seconds. Not.
It's not a big deal. Now, the other thing is. I do not have my town. But Angus, have you checked into? Is a motion to waive the reading of the article debatable?
I do not know that.
So you could, and cork a huge barrel of worms here as we debate whether. To waive the motion, reading of the motion, all right, while we could have just gotten the whole thing done in a minute and a half, all right. I don't know whether a motion to waive the article. That's, that's a weird one.
Sometimes you gotta find out.
Yeah.
So this is also Open Space Committee, Jim, who said they want?
Yeah.
At least they have permission this time, so just.
On this article, are we still in fourteen?
Yeah.
Quick question, no sunset date?
Uh, we did put one in.
But I thought we discussed more.
No, there is one in here, uh.
Oh, there is? Oh, okay, then we, then we should add that to the, then we can.
Where?
Ah, so.
But it's not in the motion.
It's not in the motion, it's only in the article.
Should be.
Okay.
So you're gonna add it?
Uh, yeah, we'll add that to the motion. It's not, it's not the article. It's in the, it would be in the motion.
Right, you want it in the motion, in other words, it doesn't imply that we get it in the motion.
Right, yes, correct.
All right, anything else on fourteen? Article fifteen, non-performing bylaw. And this is two thirds?
This is two thirds, yeah.
It's the planning board, all right?
It is.
Uh, they did ask to speak before.
The ADU.
Uh, not fifteen, seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
Before fifteen or seventeen?
Seventeen, but not this one.
Correct.
And the, and the motion's the planning board?
Yeah.
Same with the Article sixteen, I assume, or is that?
No, that's the, uh, select word, that's a simple majority, because that's a general bylaw.
All right. Any questions on sixteen? All right, Article seventeen is the planning board. And this, we decided it was two thirds, right? Right, Article eighteen, personnel bylaw appeal. This, that's for, right?
Uh, Article seventeen, uh, planning board, the ADU.
And this is general, so it's the majority. Article nineteen, MGO, town assessor, Seiten. Town clerk, town treasurer. So nineteen, twenty, twenty nine. So what? And who's reading these?
Say that again?
Select word.
Nineteen, twenty, and twenty one are all.
They're all on the board?
We're gonna follow up, I guess, meeting with, with, you know, recap the, the elements that have been discussed.
Yeah.
A score.
What happened with eighteen? I missed that entirely.
Yeah, and a simple majority.
This is not zoning, right, okay.
All right, Article twenty two, COA revolving fund. Uh, who would be making the motion?
Uh, I know they feel really strongly about it, but I think they'd probably welcome the opportunity to make the motion.
But they, they have a report, Benica?
Uh, I'm not sure. We will have them here in about twenty minutes for the, so I know I am, the chair will be here and other members too.
Okay. So I want to.
We'll offer the COA.
Yeah. Right, Article twenty three, um, I think it goes to handle this, it's finishing with this. Article twenty four is the OPO settlement stabilization fund, excuse me, yeah. Was there a? Report that someone made going to make the twenty two, twenty three? We're not sure.
Oh, okay, I find out. Great, and this is, are there select board motion or?
Their COA? And if Council on AG chooses not to, then it's a select word.
It'll be selective, okay.
No, if Council on AG chooses not to.
Right, I got you.
Okay, 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 final article, OPO settlement. Any questions on this? And is this select board? Right, any general questions, concerns about the flow?
No, I think we'll, we'll have to be prepared just to really prove what comes back and make sure for all I understand. Stuff was flying fast and furious.
Yeah.
I have a question for that, actually, so when the finance committee give their recommendation on the prompt, Casey. What is your preference as to how much we speak or not speak about? Is it just gonna be a one sentence blur or is it gonna be a? You know, do we kind of get into the weeds?
No, we, we had anticipated, we talked about this Angus, Casey and I, that we should basically do the. The short form, um, you you know, which makes it difficult, obviously, sometimes to be in the rationale to really explain it. So, you know, everybody's gonna kind of have to craft a short form of it, and then I'd always be ready to speak to where the, it goes beyond that. Then, to me, it's the the follow on and reading the audience that's the most important thing. You may find yourself. Looking around sometimes, who's gonna speak to this question that came. That's always, I think, that's why, I mean, you know, one observation is. Carol is very knowledgeable, very good, but I think sometimes she thinks she's gonna explain the entirety of the thing for anybody to say yes. A lot of times what you wanna do is, 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 you know, get that. Shorter thing out there and then listen to see if you need to explain it further. So there's a little bit of that going on that. That's kind of what we discussed in German. And of course, we're gonna meet like. A half hour before the meeting and we'll recap all of this. So, you know, once we get all of this back, we'll go through, sift it, sort it, and then we'll. We'll figure out, you know, talk about it in half an hour before the meeting.
Would it be helpful if the finance committee? Uh, look at the rationale in this, in this booklet and then just highlight it, a sentence or two, to speak.
That's exactly what I.
And then use any additional information if there's any kind of pushback or.
Right, exactly. That's what, that's exactly what I would do, is go.
I could say, or you could say, because I asked for what is the recommendation of finance committee. The first time I say that, I could point out that the full rationale for the finance committee's recommendations. Is printed in the finance committee booklet. So if you really want the whole nine yards. Right there, and then you could do what you want. The other thing is, um, are you all unanimous on all of these?
Yes.
So that's good, well, if if that.
Ask for the zero aggression to speed.
The last two meetings, I I thought that when she asked for the recommendations, just we approved for, I don't remember there being. Another rationale, short form rationale.
Casey asked us at the meeting that it sat, like, Casey asked Angus and I. To make a little bit of a snippet rather than just a statement.
We stopped doing longer rationales during, when we had the meeting and it was all very streamlined and we were just trying to get out of there.
So taking.
But my opinion is the, the, the recommendation of finance committee is important.
Right.
So I don't want to minimize.
And to Ann's point, it it actually kind of exist, just incurring the rationale we've written to occur.
A lot of them are really pretty succinct, that. You can go wrong by reading the rationale. Squeeze, but they're pretty tight, you know, there's a lot of.
Very sad reading is long thing, it's only gonna take thirty seconds, the longest one is not gonna be. There's very sad reading, it's long thing, it's only gonna take thirty-sentence, the longest one is not gonna be long.
Yeah, and these aren't legalistic, these are like explanatory, you know, like the rationale, or.
And, and the. So we'll, we'll, as I said, will the rationale be there? Except, except then, no, uh, person who wrote the rationale, reading it, except for Dan, it won't be there.
Okay.
All right, but yeah, you can, you, 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 you can, right, you missed a meeting, but, uh, but, uh. The rationale approval does not need to be read in its entirety.
Yeah, I feel like it's insulting, people have it right.
Yeah, they have it right, but in fact, in fact, Angus will tell you, so Angus and I have. Once in a while disagree on things. Angus will tell you that you chastise me all the time for going off script. And the reason I go off the script is because. I have a shorter, quicker version that I wanna get across, and sometimes it's not even a rationale, there's stuff happening between the time I write rationale and the stuff, so. Anyway, guys, I'd like to answer point, make it a kernel, and be prepared to speak to it, although. Typically, the sponsors or those that move shouldn't see what's coming to it, and I would say that goes to, to any of the people that. Wanna get up, is, is sometimes it's better to see where they're going against the both of hands, and not take them through. Uh, the entirety of their, their thoughts.
We've always commented.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm a big supporter of a lot of the stuff that gets moved, but I think ninety percent of it is, is done previously before even.
It was pretty interesting, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, anything else to think on? Casey, anything else you need? All right. Thank you, Tim, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
No problem, good seeing you guys. See you next Monday.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make some, some minor adjustments, we'll add the. Quantum of vote, and, uh, and again, we'll do certainly with the very minor revisions we talked about.
All right, great, that's good.
All right.
Thanks.
So Angus, who's making this motion to waive the reading of the article?
Uh, that's like a select word.
I will, you will?
Yeah.
Okay. So, also, I. I like to recognize the members of the finance committee when you're going to make your. Recommendation, I think people should know who you are, but when I'm up there and you're down there, I sometimes have a hard time seeing, so. So what, if you just raise your hand, and I'll, I'll memorize who's sitting where. So that all I have to see is your hand, and I'll try my best to get the names right every time.
Do, do first names, uh, in a couple of cases. Because.
We could put it on her a little, uh.
Well, we'll turn the plaque, we'll turn, we'll turn the plaque on.
Yeah, so I can see who you are, but I do think it's important that people know all of this. Know who you are, and I'd like to call on you.
Right.
As people.
And we also discussed, uh, which we didn't do the last couple of times, is, and, and again, it'll be personal preference, but you may consider. Standing up the first time you speak, reintroduce yourself, but stand up to speak to the audience, because we sit. Below the, the, uh, the level that the select board and all those August folks.
As it should be.
As it should be, and, and, and so, so people in the back really can't see us. So anyways, it just, we'll, we'll go over some of this stuff right before we. In case he's gonna get to know a lot of us anyway, so. Can't wait to see that. But she liked a couple of us already, I know.
All right, that's it, okay, thank you very much.
No, that's another great.
This is the obvious helpful for me, yeah. To know what's going on, and who's gonna start the brawl, and all that kind of stuff.
So, Rob, do you wanna adjourn your committee?
Uh, guys.
I make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting.
Second.
On favor, unanimous, thank you.
Aye.
And you, you agreed, right?
Yeah, something.
We'll miss you on Monday.
Thank you. Yeah, Dan, have a good time.
Yeah, thank you. And just for those in the room, that's the finance committee adjourning, the select board is still in session and has a whole agenda ahead of it.
I said, I, Steve said to me, when are you gonna be home, and I said. Normally, you're saying, you know, whatever, they're gonna do an awful lot of stuff.
Thank you.
You were just a warm up.
Thank you, guys.
Right, seven G M. Start with announcements, um.
We're not, well, if you, oh.
It's already open, right?
What? It is, yeah, your meeting is open, I just, uh, oh, it's six. Oh, that, I was, I'm sorry, I was looking at that clock, though, it's, it's, yeah, you're right, it's just about seven, like, you know, it's. Six fifty.
Here with the clock is, uh, yeah.
Should I wait till seven?
No, no, I, I thought it was six fifty, so.
I lost my sound.
How you doing?
I'm good.
Great.
I'm gonna start with the announcements.
I'm just gonna dump this water, I'll be right back.
Right, to continuation of the meeting that was opened at six o'clock. I'll read some announcements, this meeting being broadcast on local cable TV, and recorded for rebroadcast on local cable channels and the internet. Meeting is also accessible by remote participation, instructions around the agenda. Fall special town meeting to take place next Monday, the twenty-third, at seven P M E A N X. Uh, we have much in the state center, Q and A with the town manager and town clerk regarding special town meeting, uh, articles. Thursday, October nineteenth, that's this Thursday from eleven thirty to one. And we're asking that you are S V P to the C O A at mustvictory.org, this is open to people of any age, correct? This is a great opportunity to have some, you know, firsthand discussion about our, yeah, questions. Um, next item is a public workshop regarding the M B T B R road project and Route one thirteen quarter planning. Which is scheduled for Thursday, November ninth, details will be forthcoming. We also have a public workshop on the M B T A communities initiative, Wednesday, November fifteenth, details also coming. All of volunteers, F Y twenty-four physicians are still available on various boards, committees, and committees, and, um, look at the volunteer. Page on the town website. And finally, a reminder to subscribe for email town agendas, news, and announcements at W U B R dot org, subscribe. Our regular business, the first item B is a request for appointment of Zep according to the cultural council. And he is not here tonight, I'd be there, you have any questions on that?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah, to make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion to be appointed according to the overall council. Second.
Uh, how long is this time for, Jim?
So twenty twenty-five.
All right, on your favor?
Aye.
Great, the next item is a review of the committee charge, um, questionnaire for the council on aging, and we have. Uh, Christine Marshall here, who's the C O A director, and Diane Foxer, who's the chair. Um, so any questions from either new, while we get started?
And that's sort of the five-year priority.
Yeah.
Increased staffing if needed, one would better entail, and then. Possibly an electric vehicle. My mind goes one way, and they probably have a different idea of that means.
So do you wanna speak on that?
Um, the increased staffing, um, I'm hoping that once we have that reception area set up in the foyer, that we could staff that. Probably with a part-time position, as well as senior tech work volunteers, so that's where I'm beginning with that. The electric vehicle, so we, we recently, you know, gotten rid of the van. Uh, but there are some instances where neat or M B R T A. Um, can't meet the need of a medical ride. Um, you know, maybe a trip to the grocery store, um, so we're looking for a vehicle that could accommodate those rides.
But is that somebody independently borrowing the vehicle, or the council on A D or driving?
With me.
Right now, you use your own vehicle, right?
Right now, I use my own vehicle to do medical transportation rides if needed, but I drive a Jeep Wrangler, so not everyone can get in it.
No, it's, well, we do, still, it was declared surplus, we haven't disposed of it yet, but yeah, it's been declared surplus, so. It's on the list of.
We would really only be transporting like one or two people at a time. The reason we would need larger vehicles is for our trips, which are, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty people that are going on a trip. Could we would need to hire transportation for that anyway, the van didn't meet that need.
Those living on a vehicle, rather than getting a vehicle, if you could do a Uber instead, or Zipcar, or any place around anymore. Just some, once you acquire a vehicle, it's a big expense, with a lot of potential issues, so.
And that's kind of why it's out there for the five-year plan, then, you know, just to see where we at, where we go with, you know, where things are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem to be hard to justify having a vehicle for one or two trips a week, because it sounds like it's not a whole lot more than that.
It's not a whole lot more, um.
Yeah, so it would be hard to justify having a vehicle, you couldn't like your vehicle.
We only have, had a few meetings, few trips. Because we need a revolving account. The revolving account would allow us to have a deposit made on any of the trips we plan, where, wherever it is. Whether it's a theater, whether it's a cruise, there's many, there's multiple trips we could take and have our seniors enjoy a day or. A day with us. And, um. It's important that we get a vehicle so that we can do these trips, we can take people to places, like the Christmas tree festival. Or just out to eat, and if you compare what we have. Compared to other communities, such as Legal's Village, they're going all the time, they're going here and there, and Boston. We're, we're kind of stuck. So we need to get a vehicle that we can.
We would still be hiring a, a bus for this trip, with a heater that worked.
Yes, that's important.
Yeah, we're overworked.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I mean, the accomplishments in this year are really impressive, I think you've done a phenomenal job, you know, for the seniors of the community.
She has.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I treat them all like they're my parents.
Same.
Hey.
So priorities for the next year is the revolving fund that you spoke of, Diane, right? And so that, and hopefully that'll pass and sound moving.
Yes.
Um, I noticed on the two-year priorities, uh, permanent pickleball setup, that's progress. Any other things that, um, either do you wanna comment on, or?
Yeah, I thought it was a great presentation, and a great job.
I, I did have a question on how can the select board town manager better support your work, um. Better communication of what is happening in town, what exactly do you mean by that, or?
That was one of our board members that.
I was, I don't know what's going on with that town, whether, um, they think. That the council on aging is just old, old people, but we're active people, and we put out signs. We have the electronic sign, we have the billboard out front, we do, um. Fallsy Lane, we have a, a, we're supposed to live down through. Ocean, Ocean Meadows, but we can't simply get people interested, come out and come into the senior center. I don't know what it is, because the new report, senior center is a busy, busy place. I don't know what it is, but once we do get them coming, we certainly are gonna need more transportation and get people going to the higher tiers.
Yeah, okay, so maybe look for, for us to assist you in, in getting people.
Absolutely, if you have some ideas, let us know.
Okay. Um, and then, um, the comment on other boards and committees whose work overlaps with yours?
Wendy, if I could just back up to that, that part, I know, obviously, the, the newsletter is fantastic, and it's really. Come a huge long way over the last couple of years, and I know, Christine, that you have the option for people to subscribe digitally.
Yeah.
Which is obviously free, and we just add people to that list. Is there more we can do to get more, especially non-seniors, to subscribe to that digitally, uh, through our. News and announcements, or just to get more people on that circulation, because it's such a quality newsletter.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, get, get that into people's hands, the better.
That's, I think, worth a while, too, just in your neighborhood, you know, just talking up, you know, what we're doing, you know, work all this out tremendously.
Excuse me, but you know the pickleball program you set up? That went, that was going great. I wonder if it did a lot of, and the youngest in.
No, they're not, they're not, they're seniors, they're active seniors.
Yeah. Um, on the, I was curious about the housing authority, how, how does the C O A's work or mission overlap?
I mean, a lot of, um, what I'm doing is, you know, walking that hall.
Okay, so housing board.
Yeah, really trying to get those residents involved, yeah.
Okay, great. Angus, or Jen, do you have any questions? All right, thank you for the, I mean, this is very thoughtfully completed, I appreciate the work.
One thing I will say, and I, I told Christine this, you know, uh, directly before, I, I can't tell you how many times we have. Residents come to our office just specifically to tell us how delighted they are, what's going on in the state center, so.
We have some fans. We just smell more. We have a big cook, and I think everybody in this building smells.
You definitely helped the game last year, you know, it was great.
Yeah, good, yeah, thank you both, appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Right here.
Do you wanna go right into that other, the grant?
Oh, I did.
So I had a question, can we approve this if it wasn't on the agenda?
Well, it would need to be added as, as unanticipated, the, the other option is a really small amount of funding. We could put in the application and then come back later, it's obviously came in after the agenda was adjusted for tonight, so.
Right.
So Christine came in, it was Friday.
Yeah, I was at the M C O A conference on Thursday and learned more about this grant, so.
And it would just be.
Conferences.
It would just be an intent to be, it wouldn't be put in an application, it would just be that we intend to apply.
So does the select board have to approve the intent?
I don't, I don't think it would.
We separate from the, the applications section, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I would suggest. Especially since we have such a crowded agenda tonight, you know, I think, rather than. Shoot horn that end, I think if, if, because, yeah, we, if it's just by me, I know it's been tent to apply. That, that doesn't make word cool, and that would be put it on for the next agenda.
That sounds good.
Okay, because the deadline for that is November ninth.
Yeah.
So next meeting, you will have a meeting.
Yes, yeah, six, yeah, yeah.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, next item D, request for utility fall petition.
Would you have John Bob?
Hi, how are you?
Good, so you have a lot of information in front of you, and I know we have Bush here remotely, I believe he's here for a later item, just to listen on the page school, and ask some other things later. Uh, but if you have questions, that, you know, come to him, he's, he is on.
Uh, petition is, uh, to add. Uh, study existing fall line on. Hill Street. Four falls, three sections. New service at two ninety middle speed, a new home being built in two ninety middle speed. Originally, when I first started paperwork. Wayne was the D P W at the time. And we met at, we met then on his settlement before I sat at my own cell at the time. I also recommended that we not bring people. Down units or all the other. Um, conservation requirements were. Taken care of, because at the table, they had the results anyway.
Okay, that was one of my questions, I see all the silk socks and the photos, and I wondered. If conservation was involved in this, so it sounds like they are, or have been.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Conservation's been involved.
Yeah.
And, uh. As far as I know. Bush was all set with his. Requirements for. Yeah, we created, and everything, I think, that.
Yeah. So is that why there's, um, several documents from twenty twenty-two? It looks like the request is, was repeated. So is it just that you opened it, and then you're getting all the town approvals?
Well. You know, you know, I. This initially started, I originally started. This initially started, I originally started, well, February twenty twenty-two, believe it or not.
Yeah.
But, um. I submitted a petition, but. Like I said. Asked it. It'd be held until. Everything could be satisfied, so it could be voted in one final, most finally held. It's been a little bit of a challenge, but, um. Paperwork and the various between conservation is and very. Available. And attendant to these matters, because they have three or four other things going at the same time, but, uh. Paperwork on our end as well. Since it involved our company conservation assessment and everything, uh. I have to admit, it's been more permitting and law. Time of all that I thought would be.
Okay. Yeah, we have a memo from.
Process.
From Butch, um, saying that he's. Satisfied everything. Do you have any questions?
I mean, I, the plant boy had it here too, right, on the scene.
Yeah.
Trees and they, they looked at everything. They talked about the tree is not healthy, so that's one reason. I would have said even if the tree was healthy based on that location.
Yeah, if not. You know, it's a tree that's. I mean, it's right on that roadway.
And that driveway is, it's gonna be like a ski slope, yeah, it comes down, so I wouldn't want a tree right there. Just a, a general question. I was not planning what we used to try and get as many subdivisions of new electric to put it underground and going forward, and I mean, this. I wonder why they put them underground with the continuation, I know it gets.
Continuation of.
Instead of poles.
Well, from a wetland standpoint, I'm guessing that would be a challenge there.
It would be a challenge, but I'm just saying, in going forward with poles and things like that, I think more electric underground is definitely better, you know. Not, not a huge discussion on it today, but just a consideration.
Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, actually, I will just, uh, question, uh. Sort of a long one is what Christine's saying. I mean, I understand, I think, why, uh, utilities are reticent to. To put in underground utilities because of, you know, utility lines because of the, the cost, additional cost. But does National Grid, are you, are you doing any, in the public right of way, under any underground utilities elsewhere?
In most cases. Underground isn't usually considered on mainline. How it appears.
Yeah.
A roads. It's an extension of overhead, but there's very little development done. Overhead in the same.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Just about everything with multiple homes is done, uh. Underground. Unless, unless it can't be for environmental reasons.
Yeah, well, the reason why I ask it, that's, I was reading an article the other day, um, Green Mountain Power in Vermont, you know, it's served as a part of Vermont. Is, um, putting a pretty significant effort, beginning a pretty significant effort. Uh, for sort of, uh, climate resiliency reasons of, um, installing underground lines where they call, where they can, you know. And this conversation isn't gonna change. I was just curious, does National Grid, has given any consideration of that?
Yeah, underground actually. Uh, underway. On, uh. The, uh, due places.
In, but that's out of public, correct?
Off the main street right now.
Do you run?
Yeah, I believe that's gonna be public when it's finished, correct? Thought that was gonna be town management, one of us finishing.
Not sure what you.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah. No, I don't think that is public.
I think it's just something the town should look at going. I mean, back in the master plan in ninety-nine. Through the town center, it should be a consideration in the future, and so nobody does consider those things.
Okay.
I think the development was, uh, A and R plans. I don't think there was like a subdivision approval. In this location.
Well, it must have been, maybe it was a special permit. I mean, I don't recall any houses or anything.
Four, what one was there.
Okay, so it would be a special permit then, yeah.
All right.
But, yeah, no, yeah, I make a motion to approve the installation of, um. Uh, I guess it's four additional calls, well, um. Yes, the four additional calls, but on, per the plan presented in tonight's packet, um, on Hill Street.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks for the year. Have a work.
John, we'll get the signatures and get that shipped over to you this week. Board signatures.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, uh, Zip, no, not, not related to you. Zip is now, uh, is he here originally?
No.
So he doesn't know the news.
Save the bowl of money with Kegel.
Hi Zip.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Thank you.
We already, um, appointed you. Do you have anything you need to say? Do you want to quit?
Just thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your willingness.
All right. I, if I, uh, if it's all right, if I, if I log off now, then I don't mean to.
No, we have to stay in the end.
I'll save the town bandwidth.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you. Our next item is a presentation regarding the page school condition assessment study, putting next step. Can we live here or? Yeah, sure, whatever you want. If it's gonna be freely presented.
Yep.
This, the camera will actually pick you up at the table, so if you're comfortable at the table, that's, that'll be just fine.
Okay.
You want to do the whole presentation from here?
Okay. I know, we came with an entourage.
Just, uh, bear will bring them second, I'll pay for these, uh. And let me just do a screen share for the people who are remote.
I'm already short enough, I don't need that.
That is always an issue.
And, uh, either Adam or Butch, can you just confirm that what you're seeing is the slide and not all of the? Uh, oh, okay, I'm seeing like a.
Not bad.
Yeah, so it's, it's all good, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Yes.
So I'm Hilda Barhurst, this is Leona Lippi, and this is Samantha Kelly. We're all from Keenup Architects. So we've been doing the assessment of the building, um, and so we're here to give you basically an update.
Great.
Um, so just kind of as a reminder, I'm sorry, you're controlling the slide, so. Should I just like?
Just, yeah, just.
Okay. So just a reminder, the purpose of the project.
Hold on, it's, uh, knowing that the, uh, the zoom controls are. Access to the next, but here we go.
I could probably have done my entire presentation without a visual, but you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so the purpose of it is to provide the town's information so that the town can make future decisions with the building. So that was what we went into the project doing. And so tonight, what I'm basically gonna go through is the existing conditions, sort of our assessments and observations. And then potential scenarios and disposition for you. So kind of going into existing conditions. So overall, just before I go too deep into it, like the building is actually in pretty good shape. It's serviceable, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, and so a lot of the things that we saw and we identified are mostly. You know, things that you could improve. And there are some things that you really should improve, and we'll kind of get into that in a little bit. But just kind of reviewing what the building is, I'm sure all of you are familiar with it, some of the viewers might not be. So these are pictures of the building, so the, obviously the top is the front and the bottom is the back. So the left portion of the building is the original building, and that was built, um, as an orphanage. And then it became parochial school, and then it became public school, and then the other pieces are all additions to it. So if you look at the plan, um. Which will come up in a second. So we've identified all of the areas on this plan, and I know that this is like wicked small and you guys can't read it. The point of this is sort of to show you what's green, so what's in the bottom left. Those are academic classroom spaces and sort of support spaces. Um, on the top left, the ground floor, there's a lot of pink and a lot of red. Those are, um, sort of building system spaces. And then the purple. That you can see on the top left, and then the yellow that you see on the top right. Those are core spaces, meaning that they're spaces that serve all of the students, so it's the gym, the cafeteria. The yellow happens to be the library, um, and then the kitchen. And then in the bottom right of all of the floors, the magenta is the children's castle, so that is a preschool. So, um, we're kind of looking at this building. We sort of realized that there are certain ways to divide up the spaces to make it a little bit clearer, like what's going on for space. So what we did is if you look at the aerial. Um, so this is just the aerial of the building. We divided it like this. So basically, we identified five. Sort of parts to the building. So you have the main building, um, which is in yellow, the gym, which is in orange. The cafeteria, um, is in blue and the library is above it. And then the kitchen is in green and the children's castle is in magenta. So if you look at this slide, what this tells you is when these parts were built. And then all of the renovations and upgrades and improvements that have happened over the last like dozen years or so. So kind of going from oldest to youngest, the main building, which is yellow, was built in nineteen twenty-nine. It's had a number of improvements, a lot of which had to do with the building systems. Um, the children's castle, which is the bottom right, the magenta, so that was built. We couldn't quite exactly date it. It was prior to nineteen seventy-three. And the point of mentioning nineteen seventy-three is we know that the kitchen and the cafeteria, so the green and the blue, those were built in nineteen seventy-three. And then the most recent portion is the gym, which is the orange. So there have been a, a variety of different projects that have happened at the overall building over the last, like I said, dozen years or so. So, um, to go into sort of the assessments and our observations. So we looked at a bunch of different systems, so architectural, structural, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, fire protection. We went through, we identified a bunch of issues, us and then our engineers. And we've got that all in a database where everything is itemized, um. Rather than going through a very long list that might be quite boring, we've sort of taken a step back and kind of done an overview of each of these categories. So that you can kind of see what's going on at the building in each of these. So sort of starting off, um, is actually almost not dealing with the building, but it's school size. So the building itself is about a hundred thousand square feet, it's just shy of that, and there are three hundred and fifty students. So that's all in the, um, green column, so just purely mathematically, that's about two hundred and eighty square feet per student. So that's what you have.
Can I ask a question? Did that include all those spaces that you mentioned, except for the children's castle?
Yeah, correct. So we went back and we looked at the historical data that MSBA has of their core program in elementary schools. And the recent elementary schools that have gone through the MSBA core program have averaged about a hundred and ninety square feet per student. That's just how the numbers played out. So if we took your three fifty enrollment, multiplied by a hundred and ninety, you get sixty-six thousand five hundred square feet. So basically, your school in comparison to like the MSBA recent elementary schools is significantly larger. It's thirty thousand square feet larger, which might feel like astonishing, but really it kind of comes down to a lot of spaces are oversized. So your building, um, system spaces are oversized, the core program, um, support spaces. Not only are your classrooms kind of larger than they really need to be, you have more than what you really need. And so you use all the space because it's there, which isn't that unusual, right? Like, if you have space, you typically use it, so it might not be all that much when you're walking through the space on like a random day. But, you know, this sort of shows, it, it is significantly bigger than what we're seeing built right now. So to get into some more architectural items, so in general, the finishes, they're very well maintained. They are worn, which is not a typical in a school, especially, schools get a lot of wear and tear, um, but they are very well maintained. There are a number of code issues that sort of exist in the building, and I'll pause on a second. There's nothing that violates, like, you're not in violation of the code right now. This comes into play if you do a renovation of the building. A lot of things will get triggered depending on the amount that you renovate. So. There are guardrails, there are doors and stairs and whatnot. Your elevator sort of has. A few issues there, um, the elevator actually in particular has operational issues. When the team went out to the site, they actually got stuck in it.
We started a panic. Four or five people. They said something, like, this is not starting off well.
Um, but so if you do a big renovation, or, you know, just depending on. How much you'll think, you'll trigger some of these, um, code requirements. So, uh, other things, energy wise. Um, you don't have that much roof insulation on the building. You do have insulation in the attic. Which is not quite thick enough. You're, you're on the way there, but you're not quite there. You're kind of more than half. Um, we didn't go and measure it in all the areas. Um, and kind of the worst situation is your walls. Your walls do not have. Insulation on, on the exterior walls, so you're getting a lot of heat transfer going in and out of those walls. And it would take quite an effort with everything that's on the exterior wall, like with your fin tubes. It would take effort to get insulation in there. Not impossible, just it would take a bit. Um, in terms of other envelope items, so the windows, in terms of where the window is in the glass. It's actually in fair to good condition. Problem is, it slams shut because some of the balances aren't, they're broken. And so, they're nice, you can look through them, they're thermally pretty good. Some of them, actually a good number of them, have a metal panel above. That metal panel is way too thin. You actually can see condensation issues on that, but the window itself was okay. The doors are in fair to good condition. Um, the roof is actually in excellent condition. There are two locations, uh, in the kitchen and in the gym lobby where you have a leak. So, I mean, I know that sounds unusual, I'm saying it's in excellent condition, and then I tell you how you leak, but. In general, you have a lot of roof and a lot of it is in pretty good condition. Um, some other building envelope items, so for the brick and the ornamental concrete around the building. Water is getting in and causing a lot of deterioration and a lot of cracks. It's a security, or it's a safety hazard. Um, the town is already putting together an RFP to get a mason to kind of come and fix that because, you know, clearly it's an issue and it's an issue right now. Um, this is especially true at the main entrance, which you can see at the bottom right. That white along the top, on the, um. Uh, on the underside of that concrete, you can see that white, that's showing you that water is coming, coming through there. And it's, and it's pulling out the calcium, which is in the effervescent on the bottom. So you have some water coming in through the wall, some of it's going into the wall, staying in the wall, causing damage in the, in the masonry. Some of it's actually coming in further and kind of coming into the building, so like at the principal's office, there's a bit of water coming in.
Now, is that because the bricks are cracked or is it coming in between the bricks?
Um, it's kind of a variety of different issues, you know, would you want to talk about?
Well, particularly on the front entrance, there's probably some flashing issues on top of the arch.
Okay.
Also, the material itself, I think probably from an econ- economic standpoint, they went with a poured concrete. As opposed to, you know, stone, and over time, that just starts to wick moisture, right? Similarly, on the, the banding, the banding's concrete, not stone. You know, so that is susceptible to just weather over time.
So moving over to, uh, structural issues, so in the main building. What the source, what the subfloor is, is it a gypsum crepe, gypsum material? Which there was a very short period of time where that was very popular, and then we realized that it kind of is problematic. Especially when you want to repurpose the building for other reasons. Um, it, it's not the greatest, it's waving, it's causing, you know, you could feel it vibrate. So the town has, and. So the town has and is continuing to plan to address areas throughout the building to try to deal with that as an issue. But otherwise, the building is structurally sound, it seems fine laterally. You've got a floor loading of a hundred and twenty five P F, P S F. It's, it's an issue, especially if you want to repurpose it. And especially since the town is taking care of it, it can kind of increase the longevity of it.
But as noted here, that is, and as you know, a piecemeal approach to the sections of floor, forty thousand. At that time, and we know from, um, you know, public works, it's, it's. Pretty labor intensive and time intensive to, to do that forty thousand, uh, because of that. Uh, complexity of the job, there's some remediation involved with uh. And then also the uh, obviously we need to do the, do the work of when it's a lot of use. It's not something, the forty thousand is partly budgetary, but it's more just practical in terms of capacity to actually, uh, you know, tackle the floor.
So when it's replaced, piece by piece, what, what is, what, what kind of floors within instead?
Uh, do you know that?
I don't believe it's really like replace, it's essentially reinforcing what's already there. You can't really just take it out and replace it. By the nature of how it's constructed.
Just to weigh in on that, just um, as a comparison, we just talked about the concrete being porous, this gypsum product is even more porous. And it was used on an economy basis. Instead of the concrete, it's really susceptible to moisture. Most of the areas that were, that they found in the past is on the first floor, when you come up through the main entrance, kids get by boots. They're rotating, moving left to right. Over time, it just deteriorates the subfloor. The subfloor instead of concrete is the chip creep and it sits on a metal lathe. If you go to modern structures, you'll see a metal deck and concrete cord. So this was before, let's say, metal decking really came into being, so. Engineering this, you know, pretty economically. And over time, it just has a life expectancy.
Alright, so moving on to electrical. The power in the building, you've got a great, you've got ample power in the building, it's really great, this is the least concerning thing about the building. The only concern is um, some of the outlets, there are very few outlets, and so they tend to get really overloaded with power strips. And you probably put some more outlets in there. Um, for life safety, there are some emergency powered lights that are in the building. When the electrical engineer sort of looked at it, he was a little concerned with how they were wired. So that probably really takes a little bit more investigation and maybe some, um, get some battery powered units in there just to make sure that there are no issues. Um, and then a recommendation, because our electrical engineer is conservative, is to add some more um, carbon monoxide detectors. Especially in the classrooms and the children's castle, it's more than what the code requires. It's just his recommendation. Uh, in terms of lighting, the lighting is great, the town's been doing a great job of converting over to LED. In fact, the building's almost done with that conversion. Um, so not really any issues with the lighting. Some other electrical things, the telephone system is kind of old, it really needs to be replaced, but is also applicable to the speakers and the paging system. In terms of IT, the building is actually in pretty good shape, it's got wifi throughout, it's working. If anything, sort of IT wise, there's a one eighty thing in that the cafeteria only has a portable presentation system. Rather than a built-in system, so that would be something that's sort of an optional improvement that you could do. Sort of the last item electrically, uh, the site lighting, there's really insufficient lighting in the parking. And at the uh, egress doors, although we understand that there's a, a, a study going on that's separate from ours. It's sort of looking at traffic patterns and that will include looking at the site lighting, so that might be resolved in the near future. HVAC, uh, in general, the heating system is fine, you've got some life left on your boilers, which is great. Um, there is a separate HVAC system for the administration area, which isn't working, but the town's already in the process of getting that replaced. So that will be resolved soon. Um, in terms of cooling, it's, it's really limited, you have window air conditioner units, there isn't a central air conditioning system. And then for both heating and cooling, the biggest thing that you guys are fighting is the fact that the exterior wall isn't insulated. So whatever, you know, you want to do to improve that, you're going to be battling that exterior wall condition throughout. And then in the children's castle, um, ventilation is by the windows only, um, sort of a, the newer code thing is to do it mechanically. For plumbing, there is insufficient water pressure. You probably need to have a booster pump to get the water pressure up, especially to get to those plumbing fixtures at the top, it's very tall building. Um, the water heaters are getting to be under their life. Um, and there's also some kind of a pumping issue going on, because it doesn't seem like enough hot water to go into the children's castle. Um, so that should be addressed. The drinking fountains, in particular, the supply piping to them really should be addressed. But otherwise, your condition, the fixtures are in fair degree condition, which is pretty good. The last item is fire protection. Sort of where electrical power was like the least concerning thing, the fire protection is probably the most concerning thing. It's just got a, a bit of wear to it that kind of is more wear than the other systems that are going on. So there is a fire pump. Again, it's showing wear and tear, there are some things that could be done to improve it, like the, the room enclosure could be improved to current codes. It, it really requires some additional investigation, it's just, it's showing more wear than what it should. There are also the, there aren't any stand pipes in the children's castle, which is kind of unusual. It's unusual to modern standards. Um, and then the distribution, the actual sprinklers throughout, there are some issues, some heads are filled up with insulation in the attic. Some of them are blocked because we've got some uh. We've got some ceiling tiles that have sagged, and so they've sagged to a point where the sprinkler won't have the coverage that it needs to. So that really just takes some cleaning and inspection, somebody's got to really go through and, and, and review that. And then there are some sprinklers and suppression systems missing in a few locations that should get reviewed and probably addressed. And so, um, this next slide, it just kind of shows some pictures throughout the building, so. I mean, the building is clearly used, it actually looks really good. And I know I just spewed out a whole bunch of things to you, so to try to make it easier for you to understand what's going on, we've done this next slide. Which tries to break it down, so what you'll see here is you see a lot of green. And it really is true, like, there's a lot of things that are okay with the building. And that's really good, it's serviceable. Um, there are a few areas that are in yellow and in red that are opportunities for improvements. So when you kind of look at the different building areas. Again, the main building, which was the oldest part of the building, that is the one that could stand for the most improvement. Um, there are just a lot of opportunities there to um, really try to improve the condition of that building.
And uh, what does insufficient mean versus condition?
So the words are trying to describe what is going on, so insufficient is on the line for exterior wall insulation. It's, there's insufficient wall insulation.
And then condition, it just is poor condition.
And that's what that's trying to indicate.
So should we expect to see good anywhere or is okay instead of what you get for this age of a building?
Um, no, there are some good items, I, I just, I wanted to focus more on the red, but I was trying to be nice and have some, a lot of green too, so I guess okay. But yeah, there are some, there are some good things in the building, I could refine this a bit more, make it a little more positive.
That's fine.
But so we, uh, the report will include the whole list of everything that we saw. So that you'll have a capital plan kind of going forward, but we did spend a little bit of time and look at a couple of scenarios, which we know will go over.
A lot of words, a lot of pictures, but, but synopsis is, you know, it's in reasonably serviceable condition per its age. It's close to ninety four years old, you know, the main building. So the town's put a lot of effort into it, it's well maintained, heavily invested in it. It probably has a good, you know, twenty years left. And we can talk about why this, the benchmark is twenty years, and if you go back and analyze the assessments of the building systems. A lot of them will reach its life expectancy at that point. There's still, you know, like we talked about some major items, like the elevator, the exterior masonry, the floor structure. Currently having an issue with your administration mechanical HVAC. So there's things that can be done, but we wanted to take a broad view as well to put the assessment into context. As you look forward, to chart a course of action. And to use the assessment sort of as a, as a measuring stick against these scenarios. Just to keep the broader idea in mind. So from scenario A through F, we're talking of a broad range of. We call it status quo to, let's say, total replacement of the building. You know, whether it's a new building, a new, a new elementary school at that site or a different site. But all these issues, you know, it can come, some of them can be dispelled immediately if you think that's not, you know, an avenue to go. There could also be permutations of these different subsets. But this is somewhat beyond the assessment, you know, really, once you focus and narrow down what you're looking for as a scenario. It would need additional feasibility studies to really identify all the parameters. But those parameters obviously are, you know, what is, what is going to cost you, the financial issues, what's the life service, you know, of that scenario? How does it address the ed program? And as well as, you know, the, the condition of uh. What your return on investment is, right? You know, how does that shape the asset for the community? So, um, go to the next slide, I want to just take you sort of through some. Just graphically what we're talking about, so scenario A, we're calling it sort of a general maintenance. And you know, as Amelie was saying, you would identify those things that are priorities, things that need attention right away. And they focus mainly on the main building. And we're, we're not showing other areas in green, not that you don't have some issues there, but relatively speaking, it's, it's really the main building. This is again, short term, we'll be saying twenty years. And assuming that we're really not taking any sort of significant improvement. Inside the building to augment any of the educational programs, it's just a status quo, making what's there. Scenario B is, hey, we really, we're committed to staying at the site, we've committed to renovating the building. Major renovations, we know it has a uh, some, some, signal, historic significance for the town. And again, we're going to do a major renovation overhaul to the main building to give it. It's kind of a midterm thirty years plus scenario. And, you know, address maybe some of the educational programs inside the building. Maybe improve the quality and appearance, you know, inside the building to, you know, meet some of the current standards of, of an elementary school. But as Amelie said, we'll, we'll, we're going to be detailing the uh, the capital improvement items. For these two scenarios as a breakout going forward, so that you can decide how you want to implement those things as part of the assessment. The other scenario C is just saying, hey, uh, what if we just sold the property? You know, what does it benefit the town? And it's analogous to, you know, considering renovating my house, do I really want to spend the money renovating the house? Do I want to put an addition on? What's the value I will get if I sell the property and how can I turn that into an investment, you know, at another, another site? So, you know, there could be a scenario, you could say, hey, there's a private developer is interested in the property. And, you know, over a hundred and twenty nine acres, most of it we know, or some of it is substantially conservation, but there's a still good portion of property that somebody may be interested. Maybe that could, with the sale, offset some of the scenarios, maybe the tax generation from that. Uh, development could benefit you where you're sort of, again, attributing that cost to the scenarios that you're thinking of implementing. But we got to, you know, just as a point of due diligence, you'd want to, you'd want to consider that. Even, even from the public standpoint, maybe there's a better use to that site overall. Or maybe there's a synergy between public and private, you could say, hey. You know, there's a portion of the building that we said we want to keep, and let's make it a life center, rec center for all various age groups, from seniors to daycare. Right, maybe we add some housing to the site for low income and market rate. And so hopefully, you do a master plan and you say, that's self-sustaining, you know, it helps the town, you know. Create some of the synergy that you're looking for as a community, but it may bolster some of the tax revenues to pay for other things too, so. You just want to do your due diligence before you move on to a location. And then the scenarios D through F are really saying, alright, we want to keep some of these areas. Because the facilities, what we call the core facilities to the right, are reasonably good shape, they still have some life expectancy, but. You know, when we evaluate the building, the main building, it's just too expensive, maybe we want to build a classroom wing. And connect it back to the core facilities. And then you look at submitting to the state and maybe they have some, you know, offsets that they can provide you as a reimbursement. That make it more attractive in this scenario. So that would be one opportunity there for the site, you could also say, there's nothing salvageable about it, but we still want to keep it as a school site. We're showing this, you know, overlaying the existing building, a three-story structure, but, you know, you could probably look at planning. A building next to this building, so you're still in transition, keeping the existing building before the new building is ready. Done it many a times, and that's another scenario to investigate and study. And lastly, um, you're just saying, almost coupled with the C scenario that. You sold the site, we have a better location, we have a more preferred location in town for the school. And uh, so we're moving on from that, that original site. So those are some of the things just to consider, um, if you want to flip through the next one, we've put together.
We have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
On this one, the maintain, uh, with minor renovations, twenty years, five hundred thousand, that's ten million bucks, so we know generally what that would be.
That's an excellent person, I could put it up, just, it's, there you go. So we, we threw some magnitude numbers at it, can I ask you a question? Sorry for interrupt.
That's what I was going at, I wanted to see the renovate to approve, so that's almost, you picked up ten years, but it's going to cost you thirty million, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I just want to caution everybody, these are just relative magnitude numbers. But they do have, you know, backup, because we see a lot of the MSBA projects come through. We know what the costs, the project costs are now, for elementary schools, they range from seven hundred fifty to a, to nine hundred dollars a square foot. One just came in on a, it's a boat tech, it's a larger type of building, it's a thousand dollars a square foot, you know, it's. It's up there, but that's what sort of, sort of is the backbone of, of those numbers, and again, they're just relative for comparisons. It doesn't take into account any reimbursement you may seek from MSBA to offset, to push it into a better category, you know. But these are the things we thought would be helpful.
On MSBA, you get less, maybe none on renovations versus new.
There's a whole, yes, there's a whole list of exceptions that they'll kick you out of, and you don't know until you go through their process, what the dollar value come back to.
E, by the way, it listed as a new three-story building, going up is generally much more expensive than going out. Would that site align to go rather than up and save any significant?
Yeah, but you're not saying it has to be a three-story building, there are some efficiencies on the three-story building, because smaller footprint, the envelope's smaller. Energy tends to rise, you can grab it more efficiently. But if you were constrained site-wise for some reason, like I was saying, if you wanted to keep the original building, you only had a footprint of a certain size to build it next to it. You know, a three-story at that size, three hundred and fifty students plus, easily accomplished.
So did you look at the subject system at all in part of your?
We know of the condition, we, we couldn't investigate, it's not sort of under that building assessment, we know that you approved it recently. It would be one of the other issues that would be limiting for the site.
And that would essentially be a, a separate study that we'd have to be done to figure out what's the solution, if, if we needed isolation, what would it be?
Exactly, yeah. I, I take it there's no town sort, right?
No.
No, correct.
Over hill and over dale, I can tell. But, but that's basically, again, like we were saying, we're going to, we're going to um. Allocate some, you know, capital expenditures for the two first scenarios and lay that out in the assessment report. And uh, going forward, it's just really, you know, listening to you, getting some feedback, some of the issues that we may not identify, you know, to weave into a report.
It almost sounds like depending upon. MSBA funding, if, you know, if, if we were to pursue that and that. I, I don't know what percentage, I don't know, nobody knows what percentage MSBA will use for a particular project until they've gone through the process. But almost looks as though you're, if you. But almost looks as though you're, if you chose to pursue this through MSBA, that. The debt cost to renovate. To improve with major or minor ren- renovations. Uh, versus demo buildings, constructing a school on site for four hundred and fifty students. Might actually be kind of a wash.
Could be.
Yeah.
Could be. Like I said, they kick out, you know, pavement, hazardous materials, demolition. Number of different things and you don't know until you go through that process, but, you know, you can. Undertake that as part of a feasibility study or the, the SOI, once you sign up for them.
Item A, ten million dollars to get you twenty years. I think I'm kind of surprised at how low that is. Looking at the building, you painted a much better picture of the condition, so that's a, that's a little uplifting. So if the town at some point says, well, let's go with that option. In twenty years. Before twenty years, you're gonna be looking at a new school. What is the timeframe? You would have to start preparing for that in advance of the twenty year.
So just as a caution, that five to ten million dollars, we're, we were still looking for some feedback from you, what you're actually expending. You know, on the building and then knowing what we know what needs to be done. You know, we could probably fine tune those, those numbers.
No, I'm just looking at what I said, I agree. I'm saying the timeframe, if, if, if we were at that twenty-year timeframe today and said, whoops, the building is. Toasted, we should have started it how many years ago to get a new building online? What, what is the direction of having to go to SBA?
You know, the quickest is four years. It's usually around between the four to ten years with MSBA. Um, unless it's an emergency situation, you know, they'll leapfrog you over somebody, but you gotta get on their list.
So that's, that's four years to go through the process to be ready to build. Not, 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 not four years and you have a school.
Correct. I've, I've seen one project that actually from start to finish took four years, but that was an emergency situation. So.
So probably ten years is the more.
Yeah, seven to ten years, I guess.
So you can inexpensive drive for ten years and then you gotta pay for it while you're.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Again, that's. You know, that you're accepting your money. There's nothing that says you could do it by yourself if you haven't means to do it, you know, so.
The money is generally helpful. You come to high school, you got like forty-four percent.
Well, that's a new.
Uh, it was about, around fifty million, I think is what we're gonna get. It's probably thirty-four percent.
Down, down because when you do, it's still easily, like, fall feels.
And that's a new, that's a new building.
We submitted the SLI for that in twenty fifteen and we moved in in twenty one-two, so just to give you a set of the time.
Seven years.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Anybody in the, uh, room?
Interesting question about the windows. Given the, like, you're doing cool one. You mentioned that the women land shot. Through the railings. So. How often would you attend to the windows? Given that it's land shot.
So not all of them have that problem. There's, there's, there's a spring loaded.
Yeah, I know. The new, with the old, the old building, we had a similar issue and it became. Pretty important to handle the tendance to.
Yeah, nothing stopping you from going.
The, the issue being, uh, yeah, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
The, oh, I think the answer to all these things was complicated though, because with the windows, there might be issues relative to size. I know that. Was one of the opinions at least expressed or by, um. It's probably like Greg Hadden, um, about the width of the windows, you know, they're just, they're large, heavy.
Yes.
Um, right.
The windows that I'm talking about were larger and heavier. So pretty involved. And all I'm saying is that, uh, since it's been a lot on. Uh, I mean, just at you. Consider the sun today and. As complicated as it may be.
Anything else? Christine, did you want to add anything? Um, not that I can think of. One, one thing that did come to mind, there's a few additional files that I dug her about. Children's castle built in nineteen forty.
Oh, good.
So that was only fifteen years after that, but I did find some pretty interesting, um. History about the, the whole area. Wayne had some of, uh. Well, Wayne had, he had some files from Gary, so it was like, you know, Wayne in the back of some of the cabinets. So there's a little more history on what was built when, but the, the problem that we're having is we cannot. I have not found yet and I, I don't think previously people have been able to find the original nineteen seventy-three plans. Or plans for the children's castle. I've seen schematics now. We may have to dig into our, you know. Our files if there are any files.
We knew it was prior to seventy-three, we couldn't pin it down, but interestingly enough, part of that building's foundation is built. On stone with a concrete curb on top of it. So it may predate that, I'm not, not totally certain. But I, I have to thank the town. Your record keeping is incredible, amount of information that you've provided us. Made everything a lot clearer, a lot easier. A lot of towns don't have, you know, that type of history, which is.
I will say, a, a lot of that credit is, is directed to Kentucky. Uh, because it was young Greg Hadden who turned it over a thumb drive to us with. Uh, you know, an enormous amount of data and then to Christine's credit for. Putting that into a spreadsheet, so it's all kind of, we know where it is. We, we got more data. Uh, and just in the last two years, we've made sense of it, so, so, uh.
It's one of the most well documented buildings, actually.
There, there was a lot of information and, yeah, Christine, I mean, I don't know if you put an estimate on how many. Hundreds of hours. Well, it's been just, just organizing the information and we wanted to put the team in a position to really start from what we know. And to spend the minimal amount of time kind of, you know, obviously it took them. A significant amount of time to, to absorb what we knew, but we knew that by. Organizing and presenting it, it would allow them to kind of cut to the chase and get to what they uniquely. Know that we don't know, that we can't do at a staff level. We didn't want them spending dozens of hours or more, you know, organizing. Information or even rummaging through.
Thank you very much for replying to all our emails. This tremendous effort.
Right, yeah, one other thing too. It, it would be helpful, um, we're, we're gonna go back. Meet the team and kind of figure out the next couple of months finishing out the, the project and. Nailing down some cost scenarios, but if, if there's any feedback on. What anybody would like to see for public meetings or outreach or, um, that might be helpful, um. We're, we're still, we can do whatever we need to if another meeting like this makes sense, or if there should be a more public event or a virtual event. I think it'd be interesting to have a meeting at the school, you know.
Right.
You know, try to target the parents of students that are at the school and how, how that is. Uh, is there anybody on Zoom then?
Uh, let's see, it's a good question, um. Uh, we've got, uh, Butchers is listening in.
Alright.
No else.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. That was pretty interesting for us, yeah. Not to end. There's gonna be a lot more to digest. Not to end.
I gotta read that.
I, in, in preparation for this, I thought there might be a question about the, uh, administration HVAC. I did reach out to B two Q late last week and they have a connect with Tom Banks by phone on Friday. Uh, it does look like the cost is gonna be significantly more than what we had hoped, so he's, he's getting another quote. Uh, but at some point, I'll probably come to the next meeting, once I have confirmed, I'll be back, but.
Thanks, thanks.
It's not part of theirs. Actually, I, I, I did have. Yeah, thanks for that update, but, but I did have, that, you know, ma- makes me think, uh, Lisa had a question.
Oh, right.
Um, and, and we did share those, yes. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, because there is, you know. On top of everything else, we have to think about, um, where does a school fit in the existing structure, where does it fit in twenty? Years from now, when we really need to beat that zero, um, you know, we need to strive for that zero and, and how. How can that be done? Can that be done?
Right.
You know, and, uh, um.
Whether you're, whether you got lucky or somebody was planning ahead, you have plenty of power to that building.
Right.
At some point, you know, when the boilers fail and you want to do the switch over and the, and you still want to maintain the building.
Yeah.
You have the infrastructure.
You can handle plenty of juice. Yeah. But you don't want to be radiating it all.
No, no, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta do the lifecycle costs in that, right?
Right.
To make sure that's, there's a payback if you.
Right.
Want to see that.
Right, so then will you be considering compliance costs? You know, as you.
That's, that would be more like a feasibility. You can identify the issues.
Right.
That you should take into account when you do that study. And like we have identified the wall insulation, you know, the power that's there. And again, in probably twenty years, you're gonna replace those weapons, right? You have to do a whole energy model if you're familiar with that. Uh, to really see where the payoff is.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, have a good night.
Okay, sure.
Bye-bye.
Alright, the next item. The considerations of an updated draft MOU with the Board of Water Commissioners for use of ARCA funds. Commissioners here as well as Mark Ronalds.
How are we doing tonight, everybody?
So, um. I guess it's, it wasn't clear to me how it was resolved with the prior contract amendment that was supposed to cover the engineering costs in the new update.
You, you mean the, the original base contract or the?
Yeah.
Third amendment?
Well, didn't both, or was the third amendment covered the costs?
Well, the third amendment was, was proposed to cover the differentiation of the bidding, the, you know, parts and the, and the labor. Um, and as, as you know, some of the effort was put toward that. We did have a meeting, uh, Thursday with, uh, Tatum Howard that, that Mark and Jack were part of and. We were really trying to pin down, uh, you know, what's driving the future cost since the base. Contract included, um, the preparation of its fact and, and the contract award and, and contract execution with a, uh. Installer. Uh, you know, I took a bunch of notes. I didn't come out of that with a really clear understanding other than that.
It took me a few minutes to get it and I figured it out.
Okay.
So. Tatum Howard originally would have a set of plans. They don't have to do, they don't have to count the pipe, they don't, they have to give you. Plans and say, okay, we're gonna put in seven thousand feet of pipe. They don't have to figure out the fittings and all the parts and pieces that go with it, because that goes out to the contractor when they put it into bid. It took me a long time to figure this out because I was thinking they would double dip it.
Well, I understand that part. I understand why the, the, the differentiation would be a. You know, a separate work item that wouldn't have been part of the base bid. What, what I, I don't, I didn't fully understand going into it, but, you know, there's a point at which, uh, you, you kind of have to just. Take what they're saying, which, but, you know, one of the things we talked about, I don't want to go too far down this road, but the method of billing is percent complete rather than. Hours a task, so that's part of where, you know, we've had a hard time on the. Financial side reconciling the fact that the amount paid exceeds significantly the, the base contract. The base contract provides for, um, putting it up to bid. Assisting in, in, uh, evaluation of, of responses received. Awarding a, a contract and executing a contract, but that's all part of the base bid. And more than that has been expended. I, I didn't come away with a totally clear understanding of that. What I can tell you is what, what I put in the memo is that they, they've represented that everything. Done to this point is supported by effort they've made. And that there's an additional, uh, I put six to nine thousand, they, what they put up on the screen and. Um, it was via, uh, Zoom, but it was, they were showing a hundred and nine thousand total all-in cost. The reason in my memo I put in, uh, six to nine thousand dollars is. It wasn't totally clear to me whether that one or nine, whether they're including in that figure the roughly three thousand dollars that they previously billed that we haven't paid. If they're including that, it's an additional six. If they're not, it's an additional nine, but the total all-in cost. That they're, uh, citing is a hundred and nine thousand, uh, and they did, uh. Indicate they were gonna get a revised amendment three to the water department promptly, so I, I don't think that's come in yet today, but. But that'll be, I think, any day now, because they know that time is of the essence. Right, I have a question. Mark, if, um. He said that one of the things Tatum Howard would, would be, would have done in this, you know, secondary. Um, engineering.
Right.
Original engineering would have been figuring out. What pipe, what fittings.
Right, all of a sudden spent a lot of time.
How, how do we get quote that outlined all that stuff if that hadn't been done?
Might send it out in JP.
Oh, so, so. So the, so the vendor, the pipe vendor was the one who actually?
Yep. He actually took the plans.
Okay.
And. Spent a great deal of time with it, figured out length of pipe, modified fittings, items and everything. Came up with that number for us.
So why do we have to have Tatum Howard do it?
Because they did the exact same thing to make sure, to verify that it's correct, so they were spinning the wheels on that.
We don't have to. If you're gonna take a contradict, a contractor that's furnishing a stall. We don't care what they buy, as long as they get it and they put it in the ground.
No, 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 I, I, I get that, because I was just saying, how do we get the, uh, you know, how do we, how do we get this? This three-page listing of pipe and fitting?
Oh, yeah, I know, but I'm saying, and then, so if, if we were to buy it separately, Tater and Howard would have to. But now they don't have to. That was gonna be fifteen grand. They still want nine grand, but, but what? Engineering services, necessary for human parts and materials. That's the contractors issue. Not the engineer.
Well, that was the problem. We turned it around on the engineers to make that, because if we were putting up, if we were buying the materials. Because of the seventeen-month delay. And that's what they spent all their time. Being sure that we had everything that we needed, they put, put a lot of hours in supposedly, which John said. When verifying that and they were getting ready to put that up just a bit, and then we got cuddled on that and said. That since pipe went backwards, instead of taking longer. That we shouldn't be able to complete the project. Would put it, put it in on the. You know, prospective contractors to, you know, do their own.
That they've been instructed to go full with that level of work, that seems odd.
So originally when we talked. When we talked with the board, we came in and met with you guys and we were all under the impression that it's gonna take so long for the pipe. We thought we had the money out of that first. Six twenty-five ARCA money for the engineering for that. We assumed that with the delay, we didn't want it to go any longer, because if things were going the way they were. Time was just increasing, so we were under the impression that we were. In kind of a dire need, decided getting our hands on the pipe and fittings and all that. To continue with the project.
But Tater and Howard was.
Yeah, we're doing some work on it. I mean, they did spend some time on it.
Oh, I understand that. Uh, do they have backup? Why nine thousand bills? I mean, just because what, the fifteen? I mean, I don't know what level of work to have into it, you know?
Well, that's, that's what Angus is saying, that their, their presented to billing is not very clear, so that's. I don't have any answer on that either.
So we'll get clarity before it gets authorized, correct?
Well, I think that, you know, the issue, the, the question that I see is the one I've, I've set out is do you, do you want to either. Allow or disallow expenditure or ARCA funds for engineering costs and, and, uh. You know, I hadn't gotten into based on a specific quote. I mean, I think at some point we got, I do have to either.
So I don't have a preference whether or not, what. ARCA pays for. I think this board said six twenty-five is the number to go in with the two point seven to get the project done.
Yeah.
How would they allocate this? Like which pocket does it come out of? It doesn't bother me particularly. As long as that nine thousand dollars is a legitimate number for Tater and Howard, or if they've done, so.
So is this quote still good if it's from February of twenty-three?
What's that? The?
The quote for the pipe.
That would have to be after the contractors to, to get their quote for the pipe, because that's what we were working on with Tatum Howard. Now that we're back telling, going back to the original plans. We're not gonna be buying the part, so. That could change.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't think it is good. I only included it so that you'd have in front of you what was before.
But that's what the six twenty-five. But that's what the six twenty-five is based on.
But it's probably not because the actual cost of the pipe is five fifty-nine. You add contingencies.
That's right.
So you're still gonna, the contract is still gonna have plenty of latitude to cover that within.
Well, unless we spend on engineering.
Well, it's not gonna happen that much.
Right.
It works.
Alright, um. How do we wanna resolve this?
Uh, Jack, I don't wanna put you on the opposite, but since you were there Thursday, did, did you have, you know, kind of, did you come away with a better understanding of what's driving the additional cost?
Well, as I understand, um, when we tasked them to. To uh, create a separate bid document for, for the, the equipment, for the, for the piping and. And uh, higrance and et cetera. Uh, you go down a certain road. Of developing those documents. And then, so there are expenses there and they are separate and distinct from. The original uh, documents that were going to be uh, developed for, you know, the whole project. So i- it's not surprising to me that there are additional expenses. I think what the. The, the meeting and Angus has, you know, kinda highlighted or identified this. Uh, what the meeting revealed is that we probably in the future need to um. Be a little more keen on the, the contract language and the tracking of projects. So I, I, I mean, I'm speaking as an individual. I, I don't think we, the board has, has had a book or had a lengthy discussion on this, but. It has kind of daylighted the, the need to tighten things up a little bit in terms of. Um, future contracts. However, this is an unusual situation because. Uh, it was the very best intention to save the town money. By buying the pipe. And, and, and other associated uh, equipment in advance. Um, a- as, as well as. Um, have, create for the town the opportunity to have the project move forward without delay. Because at the time it was a legitimate concern that that um, that, that pipe would not be available. Um, things have changed and, and so we've, we've committed some expenses that are, you know, unfortunate. But it was a good investment at, uh, you know, to pursue that route for the good of the town. So, so it, it does appear that we're spending more money and we are. But you know, the, we were hedging against not getting the project done, which, you know. It's an important project, not just for uh, doing it. Uh, effectively and efficiently, but you know, it's. It's a public safety thing as well. I mean, as soon as we can get that pipe in the ground, as soon as we can assure. There'll be adequate pressure to serve that part of town.
Yeah. Is it appropriate to ask them for the bid documents that they've prepared and they're charging us for even though we don't need them? I mean.
It is.
Is that?
Yeah, typically the client has rights to the interim work products. Uh, I don't know that the contract specifies that, but. Uh, in this case, but very often that is specified and. It's certainly be requested. You know, I, I think, you know, it would be helpful to. You know, have some more transparency on what drove the cost. I mean, the, the, the invoices with a percent complete without a breakdown of hours or hour rates is. You know, it's, it's tough. And you know, I think we came out of Thursday's call. I think they understand that. Again, okay, so water commissions contracts, but in terms of the finance department, there are some things we would look for that. Are different than how it's been structured in the past. Uh, and how the invoicing is done. And I think they, they came out of Thursday's call with a better understanding of some of those. Uh, items like the uh. Um, you know, the, the invoicing where there's been multiple change orders and the percent complete is kinda tech. You know, change as the. You know, total contract amount has changed as, as created a muddled situation. Uh, as opposed to if they were, for instance, billing against a change order. So for instance, one of the change orders was a very discreet. Task to do with, I think, uh, the, the, so follow-up there. Uh, you know, I, you know, I think they have a better understanding of this specific appropriations. There was an appropriation for the base contract. Everything above that has been paid from the water operating budget because there was no specific appropriation. Um. Uh, and it's really, you know, when, when we're getting invoices and the town accountant needs to code that to a specific. Account, we need to know what they're billing against. Uh, I, I think they maybe have a better understanding of that now.
So when you go. When you asked about. Whether their documents could be, but that was the, you know, bid down. Could be all towards, was that? I thought it was a sort of a check on just what the heck were they doing or was it thought on actually using the information?
No, it's just. I mean, if they're asking us to pay for something, though, if we have access to it, I mean. I mean, I, I think Chris is right. We can commit it to six twenty-five to pay for it as long as the expenses are valid, you know?
Yeah, I just want somebody to check.
Yeah.
That what they did was legitimate. They're owed the money payment. But I don't know, the six twenty-five is what this board committed to.
I mean, as far as, as far as whatever, as far as I can tell, it seems like the change from fifteen thousand dollars of engineering to nine thousand dollars was like this, this arbitrary.
Well, no.
I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't fully understand what.
If they were authorized to go ahead with the anticipation that we were gonna be buying the pipe separate. They legitimately could put a lot of work into preparing that document. So they would have it on document somewhere.
They said that four thousand dollars on the end was like bid opening and the amount of time.
Yeah.
To, to do all that. Because we haven't done that yet. To track that from what we've done and the amount. And coming up with nine grand.
Like you used to work in construction on the side, you would get into a project and they would authorize you to go, even without a contract sometimes. And then they would pull and they would say, let us know what the cost of that work was. You have to back it up, but you usually get paid for it too. So all I'm saying is just have them provide it with the backup and it could maybe be legitimate. If it is, you pay.
Okay, so is that the only item in the MOU that needs discussion?
I believe so. I think the rest of the form of that which, you know, I think you guys were happy.
Yeah.
Prior, you know, this is really the only open item when it was before you in August.
Yeah, okay.
How would you have some?
Just at the very end, just the recap of. How much more work do they have to do on this?
Tater and Howard?
Yeah. Cause I hear percentage of completion and. So is there a lot of additional work they're doing?
No, it's all ready to go off the bid. We just need to get them.
So we're, this is kind of the final step?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, once it's without the bid, it's, it's goes through the, you know, through the central register and all that. And then part of the service they provide for this project as they have for other major uh, projects that water's done over the years is they. Help vet the proposals received. They do the reference checks. They do the, you know, make sure that the contractor's legit, you know, all of that. They do a lot of that legwork during the bid evaluation.
So there's additional work.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And so, so what you mentioned.
Form of contract with the selected vendor. They put together the formal contract. So they, it's, it's definitely a lot.
So my question is, they're not ahead of us then?
No.
Same percentage of completion.
No.
You have to find out and do all of that.
With the additional money that, that would be needed. Right now, there's not an appropriation of what's been expended.
But don't the amendments? This whole contract and amendments are not all in this project, right? Doesn't the base contract cover other work?
Uh, no, no, they're, they have a kind of a. Like a standing as needed contract. That's not what we're talking about. There's a separate eighty-eight thousand five hundred. Contract for this engineering that responded, you know, by town meeting a couple of years ago and that's.
So when you say the percent complete, you're saying the, the base contract plus the amendments, the percent. That the complete number keeps getting bigger. They're doing percent complete of the aggregate.
That's correct. That, and that's where it gets mighty.
Okay.
Right, because the total amount paid exceeds one hundred percent of the base contract. The base contract included the support on the bid process. So it's, it's. It's hard without detailed billing to understand that.
So how far, you know, exclusive of the, of the nine thousand for. The pipe inspect, how far over the eighty-eight five? Would, will they be after the amendments? After the other amendment?
I mean, one oh nine minus eighty-eight five.
Okay.
You know, about thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
But. Twenty thousand, twenty thousand. That's why I'm not the town accountant. It's out there in the flesh.
Right, anything else?
Anything or?
Yeah, I mean, we need to.
Yeah, so the form of the MOU is what's in front of you. And if this is amenable, then there's a sort of a memo. This will go to the Water Commission. They will. Uh, and, and I did send this to them on Friday, so I, I assume there's no. Uh, issues there because it's substantially identical to what they've seen in August.
Right, so does this specify that engineering is included?
It does. Yeah, I added it. It's a page forty-four of the packet dish board, the, the thing I put in not to exceed uh.
Oh, right.
Of nine thousand dollars. Uh, meaning that, you know, no less than six hundred. Sixteen thousand would go toward non-engineering costs.
So on item A, you have six twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
And then plus nine thousand?
Well, what I wanted to do is say, when I, I did the same thing with the temporary fencing is basically, you know, I have the bottom not to exceed. Meaning that way if the engineering ends up being six thousand. It doesn't take away from the total allocation. So it's a little bit. If, if there were a lot of lawyers involved, we might do it a little different, but as long as we all understand what we're saying. That was the intent, just to not shorten the project just because the engineering is less than, and it may be being less than that.
Come on.
Okay.
Make a motion and we do what's the member of understanding, which is modified to allow for up to nine thousand of the engineering cost. Using the ARCA money previously authorized from twenty-six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Sorry. Right, for the extension. All in favor? Alright, Adam.
Thank you. I just, I have them. If I take that contract to them, then you need them to sign and I take that to them individually to sign it or do they?
They really need to consider it as a board.
Alright.
Cause the board is the signatory, so.
You're gonna put meetings together, we'll talk to these guys and then together put your camera.
Yeah, I mean, they can post in less than forty-eight hours if there's an emergency. Uh, but yeah, the board is the contracting entity, so.
So I wanna make sure I know. That would be assumed is that we're gonna need to post it, have a meeting.
Yeah.
So we shall do that and that these guys want to do, need to agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that then. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
When, when, roughly when would that be?
I mean, as Jody.
I'm gonna ask these guys when they're available, if we can get something in.
Probably early spring, because Thursday.
Yeah, which you usually do on Thursday.
It's a gap three parts tomorrow on Wednesday.
Are you?
So we have Thursday's.
So Mark. If you, um, so each of the select board members has been assigned to a board committee.
Yep.
If you could ask Jody to approve, Rick.
I can do that. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought she was, but I were not gonna make sure it was on there. Yep.
Alright.
If we get a post, we can do it Thursday. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next item is G. Um, it's a public hearing.
Do you have a video?
Or do?
Just likes hanging out with the town right now.
Like you go out and then you have to pick your kid up and dance. You also stay until you have. Like, and then there's a couple more things I'll, that are exchanged today, so.
Great.
I'm gonna, I'll be here for another like twenty.
Okay.
Well, I believe about twenty.
As always, the rest of something interrupts me, making my mind up.
Well, yeah, there's a decent agreement on there and I know you were gonna talk about a year, so.
Yeah, those are next after this.
Plus, you're all nice people, I say.
Alright. So, um, any comments received? I didn't get any to this by forty minutes, so. Uh, I had a question on the, all of the current language. Changing to personal. What was that?
Uh, so we had changed the language previously from maternity leave to eternity leave.
Okay.
And that was just a vast, the joke. Previously, everything's.
Okay, so it's not versus.
Is it, should I say parental?
Yeah, it's supposed to be parental. That was. Yeah, yeah, it was supposed to be parental.
I'm, I'm, I, I.
That was my.
That I haven't.
Alright.
Yeah. This morning, I was trying to figure out, because this morning.
No, it's only, I read it.
Like only Sam can get this. No, no.
Women have nothing to do with it. Alright.
Our rental.
Our rental.
Okay.
Boy, you're so sensitive.
My attention.
Well, this didn't look like anything more or less than we talked about the previous meeting.
No. Yep. And so this includes the. The additions from the bylaw?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Alright.
The motion, we approve all the modifications to the personnel policy and presented.
Okay, good.
But just during the discussion, I just wanna say this is, well, a lot of this is housekeeping. It's terrific to see this getting done. Because, uh, you know, some of this housekeeping stuff has been on the list for a couple of years. So it, you know, you haven't voted yet, but like soon you do. Uh, it is, I just wanna say it's terrific to, to make this, uh, you know, to get a lot of the low-end improvement. Uh, another thing I was gonna mention, I'm sure you noticed on the final page of the personnel policy is the. Uh, signature page for employees to acknowledge receipt of it. Uh, typically in practice, that's only been done at the plan higher. Uh, but given that this was substantial changes, uh. Our intent would be to recirculate the updated policy to all employees and ask everybody, you know, to.
Great, I pay now with receipt.
Uh, and I think that'll be a good, you know, we don't, as you know, we've done a lot of. Kind of one-off policy changes and I think it would be a little bit tedious to do that every single time. Like given that between the last couple of years and tonight's vote. You know, there ends up being a lot of changes. I think it would be good to establish a new kind of. Point in time where everyone affirmatively acknowledges. The existence of the policy.
So you would do the entire policy rather than a page? Would you, you know, which change?
Uh, you know, we'll think about it in terms of formatting. Maybe we'd send around it, you know, we.
Just that page to change or all, all the pages that show.
Um, the whole document.
Yeah, maybe we'd make it available online and, but just do a summary.
Sign, stick it to page, yeah. Have to address electronic. You don't have to have. Or double.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but the point being, uh, yeah, I just think getting, uh, you know. I think that'd be awful.
Yeah.
So I, I did have one que, I, I have no problem with all the changes. I think it's great, um. But as I was reading through this, um. I, I have another, I have a question which may just needs to be clarified. And it certainly doesn't need to be included in, in changes now. Um, so on page seventy-three of the, of the packet, under vacation, under, at the end of five point one point one. Um, it reads, uh, for the purpose of this section, years of continuous service shall be calculated from anniversary of employment. Vacation days will be added at the rate of. One day per month, starting at the anniversary month of completed year, which changes the accrual rate. So do I, is the meaning of that then that? In the first month, say, say, you know, the increments are five vacation day increments, you know, when you, when you transition from. You know, five to ten days, ten to fifteen days, fifteen to twenty days. So is, is the, the. The meaning of that? That it isn't until. Five months into your first year at the dual accrual rate that you actually have. You've actually been credited for all the days. I, I just, I wasn't sure how.
Yeah, there are good questions.
I wasn't sure how to interpret that.
Yeah, I would, I think, you know, a literal reading, I think, is, is what you're saying. I, I, I haven't really focused on that, but I would suggest that with benefit from clarification of the future.
Yeah, it's just something to think about in the future, just to make sure it is, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I, I can tell you in, in practice, that's not how it's done, so.
That's kind of what I think. It's kind of a fun, it's kind of a funny way to do it.
Yeah, yeah, that is really funny, yeah. Good catch. Thank you, Rick. I don't know how I go pick up on that.
Okay, motion?
We, we have a motion to.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, item H is a review of the previous revisions to the TRSC regional agreement. So Angus, do you wanna?
Yeah, so I, you know, we sent this memo out, uh, what was it, last, uh. Uh, just January, right after the first of the year and, uh. Obviously this reflected some input from the FinCom at the time, which Chris was on the FinCom and, you know. I think that what we sent represents the current board's proposals, but, um. Since we'll have this regional meeting coming up on, uh, November seventh. I just didn't want there to be any surprises. I just wanna make sure the, the current board that's currently composed have the opportunity to look at these, say, yes, this is. What we, uh, you know, are, are. Uh, you know, recommending to our town parks and the other towns. And, uh, as I said in the memo, I did. You know, recommending to our towns hearts and the other towns, and, uh, as I said in the memo, I did. Uh, when it came up in the sketch meeting, the meeting last week, uh. You know, Justin kind of acknowledged that after the state of the school, this part is really between the towns and Desi. Uh, and while the compact, uh, administration is a signatory, historically, it's really however the towns want it, and Desi will approve it. Uh, so he said when it gets to that part of the meeting, he didn't know that he was the one who really should be. Putting these on the table, and and he suggested since we were kind of the prime mover at this point, uh, it fell into a less me very kind of, you know. Uh, help to like, facilitate that, so we'd be happy to do that.
So this is part of the November meeting?
It is, yeah. Yeah, because if we're, if we're gonna do any, any or all of these, uh, they would all need to be on the spring town meeting, so we would want to get. The towns kind of alliance, or not, figure out what people agree on, or what what's gonna survive for a spring proposal.
Didn't, didn't Merrimack respond to this?
They did, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they had concerns about the, the, uh, Tewa East Lawn School, maybe.
They, they did, I think, you know, and it was just as we, it's back, and they, you know, they understood the intent, and I don't think there's a concern with the intent. Uh, at least from.
They just want to make sure something was gonna get stuck down anybody's throat, I expect.
Yeah, right, right, I I will say, Justin did caution at the meeting last week that when that particular provision gets to DEFT, they may. Ask questions that were in no way prepared to answer, um, so he did say, he thought there was a chance that DEFT wouldn't. Approve those changes, and I asked Justin, you know, does DEFT have like a line item veto, or is that something where one problem could end up washing the whole thing? And I think he said it was more of a line item thing, that DESI could return it where we approved all of these changes, but have not approved this change for X, Y, Z. But it sounded like, and you can articulate it better than I can, but that they might have questions about like. Have we done demographic studies or analyses or things to suggest there might be? And, you know, anything left and the board needed, you know, that kind of stuff, which of course we got, so.
The only thing I would add from our discussion, uh, because I was at the same meeting where we were talking about this, Angus, was. It was, it was, seemed like a best practice might be that sometime post this November seventh, that everybody kind of is in agreement, that we get this. To them in advance and say, you know, is there anything here you have a problem with, prior to like putting it on a town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So if like somehow this fall winter gets all hacked out, we could get it in front of those folks and give the, they could sort of give it like a thumbs up, thumbs down, or like, you know, this is a problem. And we could get that all figured out, you know, ahead of time, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that makes sense. Chris, you have?
Yeah, it was on the FinCom at the time, and, uh. We made recommendations in the select board put this together, so. Just somebody doing Rick's, still endorse it, not probably with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it, I, 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 once again, I have a question regarding wording, um, and it's up there. It's on page, uh, page one fifteen of the packet, under budget, um, a budget, um. So the first full paragraph under the word budget reads, the budget shall be comprised of two parts, operating costs and debt service, each is defined herein, and then. Uh, it starts in reverse, go to debt service first, it says debt service, service and capital cost, which of course is the issue, is the issue that we're trying to change, define what are capital costs, but. Uh, so that's what's in, it's kind of disjointed the way it's. In there in the regional agreement, um, you know, it refers to debt debt service, but then it called debt rates and capital costs in the same.
Right.
The same paragraph, I don't understand how that.
That's not even a normal convention, or a normal way to write.
Yeah, yeah, just, it's kind of weird, um. I I don't know, I didn't want to address that, I don't know, but.
Well, what would you propose?
Um.
Oh, Rob, do you have?
I, I, I think that maybe there would be three parts, operating, you know, well, if you do it, whatever order you choose to do them. Operating cost, debt service and capital cost.
Yeah.
Um, maybe that's more appropriate, I, all I know is debt service.
Is an independent element apart from capital cost, so.
Yeah, right.
I, I think, I think you're actually talking about three elements, I mean, you look at our town, we have one line for debt service. And then you'll have, uh, you know, uh, uh, you'll have capital expenditures, if you will, so as a second one.
Uh, wh- where did that, uh, section A budget come from?
Uh, it came from the base document, it's not fair minded.
Right, right, exactly, so, so it's language that they've been working under, and it may mean something to them that.
Right, right.
So, but I, I, it's certainly like, like you raised it, just like other people raised other questions about it, it's, it's a great question, I, I mean, I, I, I see it as. Uh. When lawyers put together documents that should come from financial people, they very often they'll say stuff and it sounds like it's right, but it's. So i- this may be in case of, it needs fine tuning, I thought.
So what?
I like the idea of of paying, you know, operating cost, capital cost and debt service.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And so what would you say about debt service, I mean, each of these has a, you know, a little explanation?
That, that would be, I mean, we don't want to, you know, write it on the fly tonight, but that would be very easy, because that's a very tangible thing.
That's, that's okay.
Capital, capital cost, a lot of them are things that we're paying as we go, we're not borrowing for them, so they're not one of the same, that's, this is.
Change your questions when they're kind of, they're inherently related, but they're not. Angus, in, in our format, debt service is nearly packed up one line item in the operating.
Yeah.
Expenses, so, you know, I, I would certainly, I want to kind of help, because it has a different behavior from operating costs.
Right.
But I, I agree, Rick, I think this is definitely just, you know, you want, you want to decide the language in some way.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can, I can, uh, work some, something, and, uh.
Yeah.
I think as long as we get it around to people, you know, a little bit ahead of, you know, ideally a week or ten days ahead of the, you know, November seventeenth, uh. It, it's just a clarification, I think they're on a degree, it's, it's not that great as we.
Right, okay.
You mentioned a meeting on the seventh. Since we have Jonathan here, can I ask another question about the even dates? We have so many dates floating in our heads, like, I'll find them, I've been giving one. Um, they had a date for the, it was titled school field open house, October twenty-seventh. I looked on the website, I can't find anything, what does it entail, when does it start? That's at the football game. I, I know, but it, it said, it was supposed to be the fields open house, was there gonna be tours of the fields and the facilities and the school, or? You just gotta go to a game and shut up and sit down, I mean, what's the plan?
Um, I actually think this plan has been evolving, I think at once, uh, at one point it was envisioned, uh, one way, and I think it's, it's evolving. So exactly what it's gonna be, I don't think it's for being a tour. It's, uh, you know, more of a community invited to come out to a game and experience the new facility.
Just that one component of the facility. I think it's what the second thing that you said.
Yeah, just sit down.
Yeah. It specifically says at halftime, so I think at halftime, they call out the school building committee, the student athletes, the select boards, and and just. Everyone goes to the center, you know, fifty yard line or something.
I would confess, I'm not, I'm not organizing this event, I exactly know, uh, but I do think it's evolved a little bit.
And we need to get information if we're gonna, our take, I guess, at some point. I mean, it's not a formal meeting, it's not my.
You can go over it.
But the shut up and sit down, by the way, comes from Shike Willis, he used to be the bus driver, carrying, open the door, and the little kid that walked on the bus, and his first thing is shut up and sit down. He has the best behaved bus on the whole road, and that's, my kids remember that to this day, and it goes around the house.
That's one man, I've heard of.
Yeah, everybody knows Shike, and he was.
Yeah, everybody knew.
Alright, anything else on this?
No.
Oh, no, alright. So you said, I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't. Oh, I'm sorry, preview of upcoming meetings regarding the building, the building.
I'm gonna be chatting with her with a question about, I think I agree now, so, oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
What?
I was gonna say, no, it's not the.
I'll, I'll be the answer.
No, no, I just figured if you were here, so I just.
Okay, I'll generate a.
That's the same, thank you.
Yeah. Alright, so what's the latest on the Widdier dates?
So, the Widdier date is, is, uh, changing, uh, they had, we had previously offered, uh. Mr. Brigent and Corian Lynch, uh, each of the available dates in November, December, and she. And, uh, we talked about a special meeting on November thirteenth, uh, to invite her in to present the project. Since that time, we circled back because November thirteenth is actually the date that Veterans Day is observed under the schedule that was voted back in July, so we reached out to Maureen. Come to find out, her calendar has changed, and December fourth, which was previously a conflict, she is available for the board's regularly scheduled meeting on December fourth.
So it's not December sixth?
No, December sixth is a different, different thing, that is a meeting.
Right, the thirteenth of November, then December sixth, like, this is what I'm saying, these meetings are nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So remember.
It's not, I, I mean, the meeting's not nuts, but just clarifying the.
It's all, but no, no, it is, it's.
So the thirteenth is dead.
Thirteenth is dead, yeah, that's, that's.
Take that, take that down.
Okay, you're walking longer.
The, uh, December fourth is a regular board meeting, uh, and that will be, uh, we'll have Maureen Lynch on that agenda. Uh, it's a regular agenda time. The December fifth is something, it is a Widdier hosted meeting. Uh, that they had contacted Jim to s- to see if there was a facility, they're hosting public forums in each of their communities. Uh, this isn't something I, I even learned about until I saw them, the L E B sun in front of public safety, and.
It's now been taken down, which I told, I was probably overkill to put it on that, like, two months ahead, I, I should put it up with ten days ahead, you know, but. Uh. But if I had, I wouldn't have known about it.
I wouldn't have known about it, but, so, uh, yeah, that, that is their meeting, that they are hosting as an informational session to the community.
And as you can see, they, they've done it in every community, so the idea is at least one meeting in every community, plus the meetings that they're gonna have at the building, plus the select board meetings that they're gonna have around the.
But my, yeah, my, but that's not like a, a, a board meeting, that's their meeting, they're just using the annex, so. Uh, I want to make you aware, because I just made it, made it worse, so. Now we're all, yeah, but obviously with the, you know, circulation of, you know, the ten days or so ago, the, uh, allocation of debt, the estimated debt service. That's obviously significantly increased people's attention to this project.
It looks like no matter.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so I, uh.
It could be two million for us.
Just a quick plug on the, on the clear go, which Jenny and I have a training tomorrow to start early, get getting, uh, hands on with that. Uh, part of what was so appealing to us about that is I think it is gonna make multi-year projections. Much less time intensive than it would have been, so we will be able to build into like, you know, years three, four, five, you can bring it out as long as you want it to evolve to go, but. We'll be able to, you know, build out much better, uh, multi-year projections of future, um, budget.
Do we know, and I went to Widdier's site and I couldn't find it, how many students West Newbury has going to Widdier?
Uh, it's in my budget book, uh, I don't have that with me, but we do have that number, we get it every year.
Somewhere, I want to look.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, I should have that front of mind, because, uh, that came up the other day, it's in the neighborhood attend as well, uh, but I can get you a, a good number, uh.
And we have two going to Agnes, that's it, right?
Well, we have four, that's why we're doing the budget, yeah, we budgeted for two, but it's actually four.
One point eight million for a kid, right?
Which is a, for a time, it's been about three in ninety-nine years, yeah.
Unless you're in, let me start, we are somewhere, what the other towns are paying, and April's like two hundred and forty. Something million, we're, we're the actually the lowest number of all the communities, we are, so the complaint is gonna be difficult, but I'll still do that, um. We also have, I mean, we're the smallest community in the entire district. I know, and again, I'm, I'm still. Gonna be bothered by the way they've changed the voting process on this, because that's, every other vote that Widdier has ever been involved with. It's been, like, I think, Hero gets two votes, Newbury fourth, and maybe Amesbury get two votes, every other town got one vote, that was the vote. Now they're going, it's sort of like your electoral clause versus the, uh, the popular votes, it's not a smooth. Impression.
So you're like, electoral clause, you're not the popular vote?
No, I don't care, well. I don't care, whatever the rules are, we should play with them, right, how's that? Technically, it is in the rule book, it is just an alternative rule. Yeah, I can throw the red challenge flag out. And again, it's a path, either way, they're pure number, the mayor did make a statement on the Daily News, uh, when he read it, the mayor paid off.
I mean, they, they, they just had themselves a debt override for one of the schools, they're going to be a debt override for another, they're a Widdier. Uh, a middle rural entry school, so this, this is gonna be a third in addition, so I, I don't think that's.
He's very much in favor, said he's very supportive of it, so that's a big statement.
I did, uh, receive an invitation last week, uh, through a meeting day after tomorrow, uh, which I'll be attending, uh, in Amesbury. Uh, the invitation was a joint invitation for Mayor Go, Amesbury, Mayor Reardon, and Newbury for, and they invited, uh. An awful of communities, uh, I don't know who, who made the cut, who didn't, I can, but. My counterpart, Merrimack, hadn't received it, and I had, and Rebecca, older, I had it, were like, oh, you're gonna be there, she was like, what meeting? So I forwarded the carol, because I'm sure she's welcome, but it only went to like five communities, but anyhow, there's a meeting this Wednesday at eleven. At Amesbury City Hall that they just convened last week to discuss the Widdier project, so I don't know what to expect from that, but.
In addition, I think the, yeah, this Thursday is the city town clerk meeting with Widdier to discuss election moving forward and process that they expect.
And, you know, Jonathan could verify this if he was here, but when we met last week, Justin, uh, said. Uh, that just in the last two weeks, they, uh, there had been a meeting, I believe, between, uh. Widdier and all of the region, all the school superintendents within the region, uh, that I gathered was, uh. You know.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Alright. Alright, you straight on the dates, Chris?
No, we'll get to the rest later, let's carry on those three dates.
Alright, good.
Nothing on the thirteenth of November, fourteenth, sixth be there, another day, another.
Well, six is, you know, six is, you, if you want to. Resident, yeah, but it's not a, it's not a formal board meeting, you, you wouldn't be convening the.
Where you can be interested, follow up questions, Chris, from the board.
Alright, M K. Janice, sorry, notice of application for Culbert grant.
So this one kind of, you know, took on some momentum, um, you know, and, and so, so I know I briefed you guys on it very, very briefly two weeks ago, and. Two days later, I met with, uh, Christine Wallace, thinking the deadline was out Friday, and. And I went into that meeting saying, if this will help us with Coffin Street Culbert's, I'm for it, if it won't, I, I'm really not. She and Michelle already done, and really Michelle had done so much work and thinking of this, and it really seemed like a good match for what the state is looking for with this grant. And it seemed like, uh, not only, you know, was it not gonna be a big lift to apply, but if our Culbert, our Culberts are selected, uh. Seems like the state actually oversees the study, so it's not even like becoming a big burden on staff time, it seemed like, I said, you know what? If, if you tell me we can do it, and it's not gonna be that big a lift, you know, let's do it, and, uh. And, uh, Coffin Street were ineligible for really two reasons, they're not highly influenced, and they don't have the same kind of habitat restoration benefits, um. So we'll get to those, you know, it's the next agenda item, but. Um, you know, like I said, the memo, it seemed like a good opportunity, so, uh, unless you'd like us to. Withdraw our applications, I would ask for it after the fact, uh, vote to authorize the two grant applications that went in on, went in on Friday.
Coffin Street, they're, they're not totally influenced.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
So what is this dovetail with the M D P grant, or does it?
I, I think, I think it's a very complimentary.
Yeah, it seems like the existence of the M D P grant, you'd think would be a real differentiator for the state, uh, in, in making this competitive project, uh. The other thing that Christine, you know, helped me understand was that, because it's focused on tightly influenced, it's not a statewide grant, it's really a practice like really coastal. Community, so it's not like you're competing, I think she said there's only like five, they're gonna pick. Uh, you know, maybe, maybe we'll get lucky and they'll pick both of ours because they're so, uh, close together, uh. But, you know, it seems like a good, you know, good opportunity, and, and yeah, it's highly complimentary of that, it would be, you know. Um, and if we're gonna do something with one or the other of these in terms of making it a, uh, you know, box culvert, uh. It'd be great to know that sooner than later, so it doesn't, you know, uh, interfere with future paving or.
Now that they're. None of their dollars went within the grant, I don't see, or they will.
No, I think that if you get the grant, the state just, I, it seems like the state's engaging in some kind of vendor and that they would. Direct their vendor to look at your grant, or I'm sorry, your cover, uh, rather than that. That they'd be sending us money to hire someone, it sounds like they're hiring someone.
They will do the work.
That's was my understanding.
But just the evaluation, not.
Correct, yeah, just the evaluation, yeah, not, not the actual replacement.
But what's interesting is that they do have other programs, C E R does have other programs for, for call replacement. So that's, you know, the grant program, so that, you know, we're lucky maybe we'll be a successor.
Yeah, I wonder if there's any fine print about we're always able to do the work if we get the grant and they recognize it.
Well, I guess if we get children, they send us paperwork, and we see that, and we decide we don't like it, then.
Right, so Rob, I know you live down there, I don't know if you're finding it on the website, but the two grant applications are posted as supplemental practice. One of them, right, right, and you're not, after it was.
Make a motion then, make a motion and we approve, uh, to amend it to just submit the two grants for the River Road Culver.
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 All right, further discussion, while they're.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
So Angus, um, when we talked the other day, you would speculate that the, um. You know, the, the, at the eastern end, I don't remember what the address is, on, on the River Road, but at, at the eastern end. There's a culvert that crosses under, um, River Road, and then there's another cul- culvert, you know. Yeah, fifty feet later, that crosses underneath, um, Coffin Street, and you would speculate that there might actually end up being two applications for that alone. But obviously, if not, it's here.
Correct.
Just curious what you thought of that.
There was a reason, and I don't remember the reason, but I did talk last week with, with Christine and. A work, and or Michelle, and it might have been that there's only.
It could be the tidal connect.
The tidal.
Yeah, yeah, because you've gone up and out of two or three feet, and, uh.
So maybe.
Yeah, it's open, it's open. I think our hope was that if they selected this location, they would just naturally extend their.
So when they come and look at it, you just point to both and say, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's this one.
Right.
It's this complex, here's the picture, please. Section Soul Road, yeah, it's interesting.
Which brings us to I M K, update regarding Coffin Street Culvers.
Okay, so we have, uh, since I wrote this memo, we have gotten a second quote, uh, earlier today, uh, and we're expecting one more. Uh, and I wanna say Butch has been on a great job, you know, with all of this, uh, the second quote is way lower.
Who is it from?
Uh, the second quote was from Lower Spiritus, and then we also expect one from C E I, uh, and, uh. The second quote, you know, I just kinda glanced at it, but it's like just over a third of this amount, which suggested to me that the scope is different. And so I, I responded to Butch, and I said, you know, someone, E P W, you know, either him or Caitlin or Christine Wallace, really. Actually, with the actual amount of that was, really needs to go through them meticulously to say what's the, why is one twenty-four?
We don't have to discuss too much of this, do we, in this?
Yeah, good point, yeah, yeah, you know, so, so, yeah, without getting bogged down in the details, cause I'm not before you tonight with a funding request. The real question is, do you wanna, uh, you know, see us put together our proposal for the next meeting? To basically get the engineering permitting underway this winter, uh, with the expectation we go to town meeting in the spring for construction funding. That would be my recommendation, uh, in order to kinda backtrack, uh, these projects. Uh, but we didn't wanna go ahead and, you know, just hit you with that right out of the gate, and we really, tonight's really the first time. We're discussing the Coffin Street Culvers in any depth whatsoever.
The bench question, ultimately, it's our, or wait till spring.
That's all, so I think that the, um, cost is relevant, so it's not like we have two very different costs.
Yeah, and again, I, I gotta, or I, I'm not the engineer, but, but someone's gotta go through and, and understand, cause anytime you see numbers that far off. That, you know, someone's being or something that someone else is, you know.
So was there a written?
Oh, yeah, well, no, no.
Okay, so we did not.
Correct, right, yeah.
All right.
Now, they're, I think they're responding to the conversations, so it's probably so.
I think conceptually, it makes sense, I'd rather have it, you know, get the ball rolling now, so that we're ready in the spring to address the problem.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, you know, it sounds, uh, I'm talking to Butch today, that, you know, we, we should be getting a third quote kind of any day. So my approach would be, once we have the three quotes, really have whomever is best qualified to do that, really. Go through and make sure as, as close to apple to apples as possible, and then, uh. You know, think, who, who do we think is gonna be back, then I'd bring, bring that forward for funding, so it may not be for the next meeting, uh. Although that is three weeks out, so it all depends, but, but as soon as we have a specific amount that we'd be requesting. The idea would be to seek our for funding, and if that's approved, we'd, you know, sign a contract to go forward.
No, no action applied today?
Uh, no, I think I've got that sense of the board, that's what I was looking for.
All right, I don't know, do you employ requests for carryovers, this is just one additional point?
That's all, you know, yeah, that's all we received.
Is that gonna be the last of it, or?
Well, we, we've reached out multiple times to department heads, who either themselves or, or oversee employees carrying significant. You know, up by twenty-three balances, and, uh, these, we haven't received any further request, so.
So, did we close the door any further requests, or do you generally leave it open?
I, I wouldn't suggest that, I mean, um, I don't think the outreach that we, um. Uh, I know the first outreach, we, we said, uh, we were gonna be bringing it to the board, uh, I, 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 we, I don't believe we've ever said like. Speaking now of everybody, so I, I wouldn't wanna, you know, do that, and then have one come in tomorrow, and then I'm like, oh, sorry, yeah.
So again, we can't treat this one request any different than the others, so it seems like it's. I'll make a note of that. Go, go. Make a note, and then we, uh, except the carryover, the sixty remaining hours, I meant to the person's name, or the?
Uh, this reference, it's, you can just say a reference in the package.
For I M L, reference to the package.
All right. Further discussion, while they're.
I'm fine.
I knew you addressed stuff like that in the public meeting in the package, but you don't wanna be.
It's, no, it's fine, I mean, you, you, you can make the employee, it's, it's, uh, it's not a big secret.
Same with the quote on the wasn't, I'm not sure how you deal with that, you could.
That was a little more, I mean, I think that was a good, uh, you know, like, maybe should maybe.
Put no audience to work.
That was what people want.
All right, next item, and use of town resources for event publicity. So this is, uh, you know, shot at drafting what we're talking about with this time. Um, so one thing that came up after Angus and I worked on this was whether this also applies to bulletin boarders. Um.
Kinda, then you added that.
I added that.
Angus, right.
I, I, I already know K on that second.
I don't, I feel like, I feel like either you allow everything, or you don't allow stuff not related to town, just based on what's happened in other towns.
Yeah.
I did check with Corinne, um, the library director, that they have a policy on, um, bulletin board closings.
Okay.
Um, and they're also revising it based on what happened.
Oh, really?
So they're meeting this Wednesday, actually, so I said that I would update them based on our conversation. I wonder if we might wanna hold off on finalizing, so we, so we're implementing it with them.
You hadn't seen it till now, and.
Why, I saw it.
Talks about under the bulletin boards, not to, uh, in terms of not to need to advance a public purpose. Well, are there any other excluding criteria? I mean, you could have somebody put up something that advances.
Yeah, and, you know, this, the, the modification, so when Wendy sent me a draft Friday morning, uh, that was substantial for paragraph. I, I didn't, I don't think I really hardly tweaked that at all, but then I did add the second paragraph, um. And, uh, it was hastily drafted, so it's kind of a, you know, it's probably not, yeah. I think it'd be, I think it would benefit from additional time, um, looking at the library's policy and trying to be consistent.
You should, because you never think about how far down the road these things can get and what the consequences can be, so. We only know what we know, so what you don't know, we can really get you on the.
Do you wanna pull up the, the libraries, it's on their website, or on the page? Uh, I would just change one word in my drafts, from may suggest to implies, because this use implies that the town produces and recommends. My, the very John, let me.
Oh, I, I, I changed that, I think you had it as implies, I changed it in my drafts.
I thought I had it as may suggest.
No, I think I changed it, I think it, I think your earlier draft, actually.
Okay.
I, I changed it, cause, well, and the reason was the correspondence we got from Archie, you know, where, where there was programmed the library about natural healing. And, and he, you know, and it was quite, you know, uh. But, uh, but, you know, I, I personally thought it was a little bit of a leap to say that just cause the town is. You know, making people aware of an educational program of the library, that we are approving and recommending it. It certainly may suggest that, but I, I would just accept that that's like. You know, we're, we're trying to promote public events that are available to the public, I don't know.
Well, what is, yeah, there's also the argument that a library is supposed to be a place for free thought, and as long as it's not offensive.
Well, his, his question was something along the lines of what if, it, uh.
Somebody.
Actually, actually did harm in addition to just being worthless, or something like that, you heard it a lot better. What if these remedies in fact do harm and don't?
And some actually do, so, and then you could get in a situation with litigation.
So I actually raised this when I was talking with Corinne, and she said that this person made a point out of prefaceing the whole presentation with the fact. That this is not a substitute for medical care, and, you know, all of that.
Hey, okay, let me just read it, it's set up.
I, I've received a few emails from him, so it's funny.
It's near to like board members, as a virologist, I think the town is kind of overstepping its bounds advocating non-peer reviews, non-financial revenues. What if this person recommends something that's actually powerful rather than just useless? The email gives the appearance of the substance and the nature of the town, just saying.
I don't disagree with them. That's on every one of these issues, that's what you have to look at, isn't?
Like, what's the worst thing that could happen?
And because you're gonna find some idiot who can out idiot the last idiot.
Yeah, did you find the library post?
Oh, yeah.
It's very short.
Yeah.
Yes, we know, of course, we know. We just thought people, we just thought people, thought people so.
Well, actually.
Uh, here we go.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
That's using surgical tools, yeah.
Like what she sent me, that's interesting.
I know, it's, there is a valid argument that.
For reattachment. Yeah, yeah, it's actually used regularly in, in a medical center by, by doctors.
Right.
So it says the director approving everything that goes on. Huh.
Yeah, without criteria for approval, you have another reason.
I mean, what she sent me was like a, like a certificate or whatever, so.
Move it to another thing.
So I, I.
Should you be making some sort of statement that, that, that no matter what goes up, this does not constitute an endorsement of any kind? You know how, when you look at a movie, it always says, whatever you hear, it's not from us, the company is actually showing it to you.
Yeah, that's on the radio a lot.
I'm, I'm told, I'm told there's some good language at the food mart above their bulletin board, I, I haven't checked it out, but there's, you know. That there's something to say that, that this posting of something doesn't, you know.
Conducive.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I just feel like we're in a different situation.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we're not, not saying, but in the end, you also may wanna have that as a.
Yeah.
Catch-all snippet saying, whatever goes up, however, we're not, we're not telling you it's right, or whatever.
Yeah, they also have a time limit that, things will normally be up two weeks or until the event passes, so. But, but it's an active management, I don't know that we want to have staff actively managing the bulletin board here.
There's a lot of other stuff behind on that, it's just be further behind on one of this little stuff.
I went from, I think when Christine sent up a senior worker, unless, one of us sees it as we go by, it's not really.
I, I definitely keep an eye on it, but I, it's not like, uh, you know.
Not reading every flyer as it come up the stage?
No, you know.
We were off tangent with the original part, was with emails and electronic transmissions, and that will back the paper and philosophy.
Well, the reason was the initial draft that, that Wendy sent referred to, uh, there was a reference to. Uh, let's see, and other displays on town property, so I had initially just reached out and said I would be concerned. If that were to read to encompass things like this bulletin board. You know, that would be a, really a leap from what we had intended, so I kinda threw in that second paragraph. As a way to make sure it wasn't overread in that way, uh.
Well, I think the intent there was like the, you know, I mean, I think.
I know what the intent was, but, you know, people reading it, you know, down the road, couldn't read into it to mean that.
Yeah, so this warrants further, just, I mean, I do think it's important to be consistent with the library and your look, so. All right, at least in the draft, it will be, that's good. Um, and, and I'd also, um, as part of this, just listed the, there are a number of committees that are associated. But that aren't town committees, like W N two is associated with the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission. Um, with a couple other ones, Garden Club is the only one that, that's just a historical. So that's how we left it, that groups that were historically associated with the town was Newbury, will be allowed to have policy.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would suggest staying away from, like, putting a list on, all right?
Right, but I just made a list so I could see, well, does the, do they fall under this, and so the only ones that use sports don't fall under that. You know, the school district doesn't, but.
So, you know, theater groups, you know, there, there's, that's often how you learn about, you know.
That's what Corinne said as well, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say four players, at least have one wire off, yeah, that's one.
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of groups.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next item, um, item N, so these are the policies that have been on the list. And I, I just wanted to put them out there, so to get your input on priority, Angus, when he leaves the priorities are.
At least on the financial.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I certainly have opinions on it.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the, under the others, the remote work policy and the workplace safety, I think are, you know, rise to the, the top on those policies.
I definitely agree on, on remote work, um, on workplace safety, we did consult with insurance, you know, six or eight weeks ago, and, and. It was extremely unhelpful, um, you know, they didn't have any kind of, I mean, they sent us all this cautious stuff, and like, I mean, it was there. I mean, it was like a manual, uh, it really wasn't responsive to what, so it's something we're gonna just have to draft.
Just say with this, okay.
Um.
So, um, any of these, do you have questions on it, or do you think?
No, definitely defer to Angus on the prayer, I mean, I said maybe, I know that's a lot to deal with, maybe once a month you bring one forward, and we'll pick them off. I don't know, whatever he's comfortable with.
Yeah, the problem is, it would be a significant amount of work to make that happen, but I, I, I would like, I'm sure you would too, Angus, to try to get these, you know, the more critical ones.
Yeah, I really would, I mean, the, the background of the financial policies, especially that second tier, uh, you know, that was all part of those community contact policies. And, uh, they, uh, that was at a time when a lot of those things actually weren't happening well. So I'm, I'm not as, you know, losing sleep over the lack of a written policy, cause at this point, things like. Recon affiliations, revenue turnover tailings, you know, these are things that are really tight now, but we're not in twenty eighteen. And I think when the select board, I've worked with, um, the, uh, D O R on a community contact policy, that. Some of these policies are really kind of like outlining what you should be doing anyway. And at that point, some of those you couldn't count on, now thankfully with the team we have, um, those are all going really well, but it really is. Not hard to bring these forward, it's just, you know, even to spend, you know, the, a few minutes. It's, I can't even justify that with all the other stuff that we're doing and that needs to get done, I, I can't go into the office to start working on it. It's just like, there's just not enough time in the day, so.
Could the first, the procurement policies, is that something the C D O could work on?
Yeah, probably, yes, but we have a really good draft, there was really just one sentence that we had a question on, I know Jenny's spent time on that. That where, where, where we struggle and what makes it a bigger project is we, in, in our research on that. Cause our starting point was the D O R policy, which is fine, but it's not that great. There's, but we researched some other towns that have much more, you know, lengthy procurement policies that are. There's some, but we researched some other towns that have much more, you know, lengthy procurement policies that are that are really good. But they don't, it's not like you can just adopt it. Popeye and Center, you have to customize it. And then the other thing is you have to make sure. That everybody who's subject to advise anyone. So that's where some of the time comes in. Uh, on some of the things that we talked about earlier this this evening with contracts. You know, it definitely exposed some gaps, uh. You know, for instance, the the lack of a signature block for the town accountant testing the funds uh, being available. That amendment three that was sent back in May that Bob signed should never have been signed. They did not have funds available. He thought. And I believe he thought in good faith that the art of the funds were available, but the fact is they weren't. Uh, and that never would have gone as far as when. If the town accountant had had to sign off on that back in May, as it was, we didn't learn about it till July when we, when the invoice was put through for payment. So. These are things that we've been having those conversations with that department for years. And, you know, I I think, um. Having a written policy would be helpful because then you can send it around, but at the same time, part of part of our problems arise from people. Maybe really don't care like what our policies say.
So potentially that could be the next order.
I think that's a single, that's been my highest priority for for months and we were bit close back in whenever it was like March or April. It was before this board and there was one sentence that really didn't make sense. And so we tabled it and then. People went, uh, in six months.
So, well, you think, I mean, how much more would it be to figure out that one sentence?
If it's just a matter of that sentence, we could have it on for the next meeting. Uh, it's if we, I mean, Jenny and I would like to do something. More robust, that's that's a bigger project. We do have a great template from another town, uh, but it's not something that we have time. You know, we we both are in agreement on generally what we want to do, but it's the details that take the time, as you know, so.
So is there any value to getting a good enough policy on the books and then?
Yeah, I think we could, we could do that one for for the next meeting.
With the sub time of good enough.
Better than none.
Better than none.
Israel Sacks book on burners, you could better best.
And I think, you know, one thing I just wanna mention briefly on the procurement conflict of interest, uh, and I do think with our our, you know, um. As we've evolved the procurement office, uh, and we need to continue to do that and power that. You know, it get, it had sometimes does get get a little hazy in terms of who's actually involved with procurement. Legally, it's not hazy. But in practice, it can it can be hazy and, uh. One thing that in one of the times I used to work in, uh, they had a policy on conflict of interest. Uh, that said that every year the town would circulate a list of each of the seven counselors. Of every vendor that did over, I think the threshold was five thousand dollar business with the town. So we would circulate a list. And and each of the seven elected counselors had to disclose any business relationship they have with anybody doing any substantial business with the town. I really liked that policy. In that instance, the council would awarding contracts that were over a certain threshold, that is a hundred thousand dollars above that, the council had to devote it. In this form of government that the board really isn't the contract award authority, except in some, uh, specific instances, but. I do think like that's that procurement conflict of interest. There there have been specific instances I've been aware of over the years here that. I think we would benefit from a policy like that, even if the. Individual isn't formally awarding the contract. If, you know, there's, you know, you see it, there's there's quotes that we get from vendors that, you know, are friendly with, uh. A committee member and it creates, it it puts staff in an awkward position. So we're we're trying to get rid of that. Really have the purchasing go crew staff.
So it seems like that would be a fairly straightforward policy for the template or is that more?
It it would, but other than, I mean legally, it's really the only people who would be doing disclosures would really be like the chief procurement officer because. And like the wire commission, they're awarding their contract. Yeah, I think. I think it'd be good to get a good enough policy on that.
Are there organizations that have boil like technical test policies?
Everything on the financial policies came from the master department revenue. There was a community compact grant pack in twenty eighteen where they wrote nineteen financial policies. You know, so they're all based on kind of best practices.
Well, it's kind of the thin most and then you can you can expand on that.
Yeah, a lot of them are two page policies. They're they're not, they're not that needy. Uh, but, you know, they're good. There was a whole backstory I could tell you about why they didn't go forward more quickly back then. Uh, basically there were five that were done and the rest were tabled, but there there is a backstory, uh, which tonight probably isn't the time for that. Or why not?
All right, I have a queue of minutes. Updates.
I like the way you're trying to speed the meeting.
Any updates?
They're looking at me, so I sent out an email to all my. People with two exceptions because I had a phone on the phone and the other didn't have a chair, which was cultural council, which Jim will send me that information soon. Um, the planning board, I actually spoke to Brian Murphy the other day. And emails, I said, this will be doing if you need assistance, contact, whatever, let me know. The debt, uh, historical commission actually attended the meeting the other night. They even had a forum with, um. Lisa and, uh. They're looking for another member if anybody's listening. I always tried recruiting one person to town, which you can't do it right now, but in the future in May. Actually, there was somebody who would be, I don't wanna mention her, she'd be embarrassed, but she would be phenomenal. And they all agreed to, and I tried twisting her wrist, but she's a little too busy right now, but maybe. That Fred at the tree committee we contacted, some contacted, most of them.
Rick, you have a good report? Uh, let's see, uh, energy and sustainability committee, so you know this. We're trying to move forward or will be trying to move forward just in the thought process about, um. Uh, solar at, um, P P W sites, um, and, you know, there's nothing really definitive. Nothing even close to definitive at this point. Um, uh, Amoresco reached out to me, um, following up. You know, dialogue from six months ago about the feasibility study and they where they declined, said that's not really their business. But they wanna talk with us. Actually, Chip Wallace and I are gonna, um, talk with somebody at Amoresco, we're gonna just tell them where we are. Try to find out where they are, you know, what they're interested in, what what is their model, then we, is there a match at all? And, um. And and then, um, one of the committee members, uh, Camden Holland, um. Has, he's. His business is sort of. The private counterpart, servicing private client counterpart to what, uh. Power options does, if you're involved, power options was the kind of that was involved with, uh, with the nonprofit that, uh. That company select came in to us with about solar behind pace. Well, um, anyway, um, so. We're gonna probably have a conversation with, um, power options, maybe select will be in that conversation as well. I spoke with Angus about that and. Uh, we haven't really tried to schedule yet, hoping you do that in the next couple of weeks and then just to get done. You know, the C C L R C is just moving forward with the energy being pretty much the primary focus, um. I haven't been to a board health meeting yet. It was both the ones in Congress. Couple of things I can't recall a date, but, um, hopefully I'll get to that. Go to four water commissions on Thursday.
Subscribe to agendas, the, um, cable advisory thing is not really often staring at the ninety.
Yes, but I think there's actually another, that more than just that one that just don't have an optional sign here. I don't know.
All right. P, town manager recommendations?
Uh, I didn't have, I I wanted to just say a couple of things. I didn't obviously put anything in the packet, but one thing I just, uh, think that we. Sometimes get overlooked, uh, is, you know, when we spend the time on the privatization is the. Day to day stuff, which is sometimes difficult in nature. And so there's different periods of of the year when different. Things that are kind of part of the baseline and, uh, you know, takes taking on a a bigger share of time for the, you know, for a. A week or two or a month or two. Uh, so, you know, I did put together my list of kind of the baseline, which you've seen and. Uh, some of the things that have taken on. Proportionally more time lately, uh, and those are gonna be different every day. I won't go into them now, it's it's late, but. Uh, I think that's something that, uh, you know, part of my goal in. Sharing information with the board is just to to stay in sync in terms of, uh, you know, workload bandwidth and, you know, if we know. For instance, we have some things coming up that are, I mean, I, well, here's just one example, like the capital program. You know, is due under town policy by November first and we started meeting with the department heads back in in July. We had a a number of working meetings about Jonathan a week or so ago and really drill down and page school and. Just, you know, the the process of updating that capital program really starts in July and goes through October. It's a big amount of work, a lot of meetings, a lot of correspondences. So that's just kind of one of the things that's like in the background. I'm very comfortable by November first, I'll have that, I'll have it ready, but but in order, you know. To keep on track with some of those like baseline things, if I don't make you guys aware that that's part of the. workload, it would be easy to get subsumed by all the things that are on your agenda. So I wanna try to think of like a better way to just kind of without bogging down the packets or without creating a lot of extra. Work, but to just take something like that list and like do a little star like just in the. From the prior meeting to this meeting or or like looking ahead, these are some of the things that are like. You know, big things that that, uh. I mean, right now we have the audit, the financials are done, but the management letter is not done and that. Relies on me spending some time to get the audit. To me, like, that's a really urgent thing, but days go by, weeks go by. I don't find time for it. I'm focused on everything else. And so I wanna find a way to. You know, better communicate some of that baseline stuff, which isn't actually even on those lists of. Ninety priority projects, but but if I don't remind you. You could be forgiven for like not. Recognizing that, oh yeah, there's there's that too, you know.
Could that just be a standing item on your updates? Just. Just a verbal work work on this, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I have, you know, some of the things, uh, I did go through and just bold the things that are like particularly. Time intensive or or looking ahead, you know, things like the police dispatch union negotiations. I had a call with Tim, you know, I'm working to. Make sure we're gonna be able to hit the ground running with that. There's there's a lot of lead up that helps. Put us all in a position to succeed that if we don't, if if I don't. Do that stuff day in and day out, you know, um, that's when we get back to where just every practice together. So. You know, then things flare up. I mean, Wendy knows I spent some time last weekend on summer rec program that I really hadn't attended to. And and but I will be, you know, for the next, at least. Period of time and and to be where we need to be next summer, really need to spend that time for the next two states park and recommission, maybe to have a written proposal for that. So on and so forth. And tho- those are things that, um. Just, you know, chronically kind of, uh. You know, I think I get those done, but that's part of why I'm sometimes not getting. The packets done till midnight on Friday is because during the work, we can actually be working like my day job, so. One thing I was really happy about, I I had to get a little nervous over the weekend because, uh. It occurred to me the holiday tree lighting is coming out and, you know, I haven't done anything on that. I talked to Rebecca, she's all on top of it. She's been in touch with page school, we're looking to get, you know, kids to sing. You know, I've reviewed all these lists with staff and so it is nice when like there's things that I, I'm like, oh, thank goodness, I I don't. Need to do too much to worry about that. But, you know, I have one of the things I have on one of those green communities annual report, if that's not a year, it's always a big thing. It's not something I personally. Have much to add to, but I I need to make sure that's like the staff that do have a little part of. Focused and aware and if that all gets done, it doesn't become a that that last minute issue, so.
Well, I think it'd be good to just give us a snapshot of then in the coming month or something.
Yeah, I think that I kinda keep those lists myself anyway, so it really wouldn't be a a a lift to just give. Kinda, you know, and a lot of these are cyclical and and could even over the course of the year, like obviously you know. July to September is a big close out the year, prep for audit, you know, but to get some of that just. You know, better, uh, lead out so everyone kinda sees that there are different kinds of year where there's more or less bandwidth to do anything whatsoever. And sometimes there's almost no bandwidth to do much of anything other than the baseline stuff.
Okay, I have a queue. You just go to your page by page?
Yeah, I make my quick comments first, so. Both of my corrections are gonna be relative to who made the motion and made the second, because I find a lot of inconsistencies. With what I had written down. That's not to say we'll put these together strong or I'm wrong. I think I'm right, but. I will just point them out. And it can get clarified.
Christie wants to give you those and I sort of have my list in my locker.
Is there, does it have to specify who actually made the motion and second, or can it simply say there was a motion and a second? And a vote?
If it's in there, it's different. I'm gonna correct it.
No, I understand that, but but I remember, I mean, yeah, because technically with the three member board. Essentially the same, the motion was properly made and seconded. Because I do think that just in the interest of like.
But I would work it out on all of them.
Yeah, unless, I mean, it's one thing if like you're approving the issuance of that or something that's like you're recording for the. I don't know, I just, I I know back when I started, the former assistant before would would come in like. Very aggressive, like, wait, then I'm like. Motion and a second, like it's honestly not worth.
And there's a lot of them.
Sixty seconds of time.
So and so made the motion with a second, and then some going back and relisting the tape, it's just not. Well, that's what I'm thinking. Somebody's listening to it, they don't know all voices and if it's made quick and sometimes.
Well, actually, that's what I think Max is struggling with. I think sometimes he can clearly recognize the voices and and then probably sometimes he can maybe.
But then sometimes emotions get made and two people second at the same time. The only, the only thing. It felt like the motion was made seconded.
The only thing I think there would be, there's something that he did or something to say and specify who voted how unless it's been asked really. I mean, in my handwritten notes, I always write it just because I'm here, I might just wanna write some. I but I don't give my notes to Max and ask more.
That's a different conversation.
Okay. But yeah, I think, uh, if we're gonna do it. I don't, I just, I'd hate to see him like listen to old meeting tape.
Yeah, more than once. I will go through it and make what I think were the motions and the seconds tonight, but after that, if you wanna go that way, I'm fine.
I mean, you can convert it in the minutes to motion was properly named and seconded.
If you wanna do that.
You have to say it properly? I mean, how can you improperly make a motion?
Uh, if you make a motion and then I do.
All right. All right, so moving along. All right, on page one forty five, under item D. Uh, this is a quote from Jack or Jack urged the board to consider building in a shorter timeframe. I think we just wanna explain what that means. So rather than a hundred year six feet. He was asking us to do the less conservative. Well, he wanted us to to look at a shorter timeframe in terms of the impact to the, um. Rick, do you know what the number was?
It was twenty seven.
Yeah.
Twenty seven.
Yeah, so maybe just the detail on that.
Yeah, I should look at some one forty four. The third was.
Is this when you said we should be quoting? Oh, one one forty five, sorry.
There's gone through that too. Uh, but no, one forty four, it just says that. And this is not something we said, but, um, the pipe would pump water versus streaming through a gravity feed discussion, theory discussion of water pressure. Where it actually would be possible to hook up western grid hyphens and piping. Current that, it would, I don't think it was that quick an answer. That would, and and I don't know if that makes a difference.
Just strike it would then.
Yeah, yeah, right. Inquired, is that the one we're looking at, board member Parker required of purging the reservoirs? Were you looking at that?
No.
Would remove many of these bubbles to improve water quality. I just wanted to clarify that I think what I said is either the upper or the lower RCH as opposed to all the reservoirs. I wasn't suggesting that we drain all the reservoirs. I hope nobody thought that. There's all the water going. They drained the reservoir to get them angry though.
So my question is on the last sentence on item D, Rick. Parker reminded her they should be plotting to avoid all additional expenses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think I did see that.
I just wanted to be clear on what.
You know what? I I meant to, I meant to go find that recording and see if I actually said that, because I don't think I did, but I might have.
I think it's, you know, warranted, we should avoid all additional.
Yeah. I don't think.
I I didn't say steaming.
You know, Rick.
It struck me when I saw that that I might have said planning and maybe I had marbles in my mouth and I said it sounded like I said plotting, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense.
Yeah.
That's to be adjusted. If you have anything.
Yeah, I want to go back to C to B C. That's probably inappropriate comment in Alaska above the. With Jack Dugan, halfway through, I'll read it. And if you could put something in bold, I thought it was such a good statement that he made. On that note, Dugan commented, the pipeline being installed will be a permanent occupation of Westburyland and an equitable exchange should be thought of such as guaranteed water rates or access to it in the future. Fact that he said that with with that that group there, I thought was phenomenal and it was the highlight of the meeting. So I don't know if you bold stuff, but that's a pretty good comment for people to remember. Well, it is. He told the new report water board right there that that's what you're expecting.
With water.
The message got back, I would think. That's good. Under E. Motion for the income was made by Dan Innocent, second by Anna Sullivan, was capital loophole. Further down, the next one. Wild made the motion. Read second, that's correct. But yeah, and again, Dan Innocent, Anna Sullivan, wasn't the capital loophole. Big deal, I know.
I think it's on E. About two groups away down the, what was it? The line above starts Article twelve twelve. So it says, and it was E was me. He mentioned that he felt Cherry Hill property would make a good, I think, I actually did go back and listen to that, might make a good site. I I I wouldn't be so bold as to say, might might make.
Was that A?
Yeah, I have nothing else in that minute.
Okay, on the next page on item B, I'm just out for not using earmark. The last sentence about the motion.
Or item?
Item E, B.
Allocation appropriation.
Yeah, appropriations. Earmark seven eight.
Yeah.
Following page on item J. Can we say something says man hours? Third sentence, much as a way to reduce labor costs, maybe.
Yeah.
And is it the hypothetical numbers, the next sentence, is that an accurate statement? The new software allows you to be hypothetical?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, or, yeah, I mean, or model numbers, but yeah, that's that's, I think people would, that's that.
Okay.
I don't.
All right, under item K, the next, the repeal, we're not repealing the personnel policy, that would be by law, right? So just correct that. Anything else on that page?
On the H, said no motion made at this time, this is relative to the six hundred and twenty five. And we agreed at least as a board that that six twenty five would still be used for the funding of the the water. Remember understanding?
Yes, right.
Doesn't say that, I'm not sure there was a vote made or not, but we agree that that was the concept, so. Item K. Motion is made by Parker, seconded by Wild. I'll read again, just. Under M. That's what made by me and seconded by Rick Parker. Same thing for P at that.
As amended?
Motion approved in Minnesota. Number eighty.
And amended.
Next one's. Seven seven. Lot that's smaller here.
Probably because they're eleven by, it's it's probably legal size that was.
On the top of the next page. It should be PFAS capitalist. Then it was mentioned.
One about critical, when they made the motion. Well, Rebecca, I'm trying to park a motion to approve the draft article number two for the two hundred and twenty two thousand. Three seconded, says the motion passed, but the motion failed with a one to two no vote.
Wait a second. We have video.
All right, so we got that. So it's two no.
Yeah.
So on Article twenty one. It sounds like Jennings is repealing the personnel policy, so you can have management of personnel matters.
Yeah, there's probably.
Yeah, I mean, the town manager has always had personnel, so so just that can be clarified. I don't want anybody to think it's a power crap. And then on conservation commission, the last item, wasn't it a three year term? If you could just double check that.
Yeah, I also thought that was off. I didn't know what it was. Or was it the remainder's going to turn? Anyway.
Yeah.
Make a one thirty minutes now.
Twenty seven. Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, cover my second.
Two seconds and I will next to start one. That looks great. Now when you say properly, properly, motion voting, motion was properly made seconded.
All right, under item B. It says that the chief is taking the reins for the time being. That's not accurate. Well, is it an interim?
It was on the agenda as interim, just because we hadn't, you know, worked out the formal. So yeah, I mean, I'd actually at that point it kind of wasn't interim for some that. Yeah, well, it still, it still is, we still haven't, yeah.
And then item D, the whole.
And I guess I would just, since we're in, I would say half half resigned because her date of resignation was September thirtieth. So as of that point, well, I was already in the books.
Yeah. Under item D, the very last, just about the the studio and the school. It wouldn't be that Westbury had a studio in the school. It would be a school, a studio property. There's a way to clarify that. It wouldn't be our local store, the studio and the school.
Yeah, that could let they could use it.
What's in that page? We'll go on the next one. So under item H, Angus, is it true that because the day after Thanksgiving, I wasn't in any of the contracts, that's why the town didn't have it? Or is that we changed it when?
So as of, but by this point, it it's in all three, but over the years, back like when I started twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, part of why the board didn't want to call it a holiday, which they didn't want to, you know, coming out them for a bad thing. That they didn't receive. But this went all pretty, you can skip that.
Again, that one says Parker motion to do it for second, that's both bendy.
Want to get credit. Under item L. I don't think we suggested that we wouldn't keep them going if we're not making a profit. Said the room wondered if it was mandatory to keep them operating if the town was operating a loss. Is that fair? Item L.
Well, there was some reference to that, some, I don't remember if you said, do some speculation, couldn't, do we have to operate them? If we're, is that a loss? And the answer to that, I don't remember what the answer looked to that, but I think we, in the comment was out, mind operating.
And plus we.
Talking to the room, we wondered that.
Oh, yeah, the room wondered, I see.
On item R, lessons. Jenny said that no permits for further construction would be created by the state. I don't think that's.
So they would, yeah, they would take up, they were not going to consider, they want them to entertain, I think is the word. Any permits for a COA until through these special permit.
On item S, the application was filed for the grant. And did you sign an agreement with the clergo before the grants received?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's the whole thing, they would, they would take the loss.
There was a clause in there that it was a contingency in the grant that's, or in the contract that was specifically predicated on the community compact funding and it said, if we didn't receive the funding, that we wouldn't, that it would not nullify the contract and we would have no obligation for any kind of spend.
You know, believe it or not, I think you actually asked that same question.
Yeah, she did.
Obviously, I didn't listen to the answer. Okay, any? Anything else on that one?
Motion approved in Minnesota, hold the second, as amended, sorry.
And the next item, those are.
We did receive the grant and we got this letter and and we scratched our heads because it really didn't, it seemed like it was a second letter and there should have been a first letter to say you got the grant an extra amount. But we did, Rebecca did follow up and and verify that we did in fact receive the grant in the amount that we requested.
Right.
We haven't received all the grant paperwork and so forth, but when we got this letter, we obviously were, sure seemed like good news, but we didn't really understand it exactly.
For five thousand dollars.
So, yeah, so we did get the grant and we should have our first training scheduled for tomorrow morning. Jenny and I are getting trained on the budget on module. So we're we're pretty excited.
It's perfect timing.
It really is. Yeah, yeah, so. I hope it's all it's cracked up to be, but it sure, you know, we sure feel like we picked the tires and we feel very confident about it.
Public workshops.
So when I put this on the agenda, I had a working meeting scheduled for this afternoon with Sue and with Christine Wallace. Sue was traveling, her flight was delayed, so that meeting today, three ended up being postponed to tomorrow, so we haven't met. So I thought by the time this would come up, I'd be able to tell you the starting time and the kind of itinerary will be tomorrow and I'll, we'll start to have more detail, but basically, we, you know, back over the summer, we had, we had a draft agenda that Sue had put together and so we'll be refining that for each of the two events. And what we've told other department heads is, you know, we're going to have as many, try to get as many people in each of these as we can. We do see it, even though we're we're not going to full kind of like workshop, you know, it's more focused on one or two projects each. We do see it as an opportunity to showcase for the public some of the other things going on. And if people, you know, have time to put together flyer, you know, info flyers or even posters that, you know, we want to make it so there's some kind of like exhibits there in addition to the primary subject or subjects that will be the the focus. Which we're pretty excited about. So whether that's, you know, the whole town council, the weapons by law, or some of the paid school, or just as a way to to give attendees, you know, a sense of, you know, just those topics on the agenda, plus some of the other things going on and how they can learn more to get all.
So will that be at both sessions?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And that would be in the NS.
Ah, they'll both be in the NS, yeah.
And then I hope you don't have time for these things. Like, I know we heard the dates at one point, but there's no.
We we haven't set a save the date because we're still working on that. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. We're working every day.
No, no, I'm just saying, we at least have to have the date plugged in, just like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
MVP River Road.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, Max has had a draft save the date, ready to go for two weeks, but he can't send it out till we give him some time and.
Oh, yes, I went to the planning board website, it's not here. It's like, maybe I just heard that.
They're just, it's it's still, you know, the planning's still underway, but we do, I hoped we would have a save the date out by now, but it's so. I'm sure we'll have that out tomorrow, because, or maybe not tomorrow, maybe Wednesday, but yeah, we want to get it on people's calendar, both of those dates. There's a lot else going on.
I haven't seen that stream.
There is, and fifty percent of the trees.
Yeah.
That's just came down, I put. The worst part is that fifty percent of our strongest trees, that's the.
Yeah, so so what I would be really interested in knowing, and we're not going to do this work because I don't think anyone has had any time, but I wouldn't take that one, but all trees are numbered. And there was a rating system and, you know, we know which trees were were what category.
Yeah.
So, you know, and 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 I'd be I have no problem with being proven wrong and having decided to go for the whole Lucha and 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 treating everything. But would be interesting to see what the correlation was between the, you know, the the health of the tree, their measure of the health of the tree and and what what has survived.
And Rick, to that, I would add one other column. They also should tell you what their current can be assessment is. They have a map, but it doesn't tell you. So there's two columns missing. One, Rick, what Rick mentioned. I'd like to see the migration too, because I'm sure what's happened is some of the initial tier ones are now down in tier two.
Could be.
Yeah, so so Angus, they have a page on one fifty nine, you're one fifty nine.
Yeah.
If if for each of these things, they would just call out the initial assessment tier and the current assessment tier. You get us to it in Excel, so we can look at it, because I think what you're going to see is a migration and you're going to see the tier twos. Buying lives came off the list and some tier ones now tier twos.
Do we know that they evaluated it that way or did they just say?
They 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 have a page here. Yes, they did, they.
So they assign in tier two now?
Yeah, so so if you look at the next page, you can see that they they.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's right.
It's right in line with the proposing, right? It's just, you're gonna, you're gonna see this kind of.
You know, Robert, I didn't look at that close enough, I saw the different colored dots.
So, they, if they do that, that'll be fascinating, I think what you'll see is. There, there's an argument perhaps that the tier ones were worth it all along and the. Tier twos were less worth it at all.
So, I wonder if it's something that the tree committee could work on.
Definitely, yeah.
Good, thank you, and then if they send it back in Excel, because that allows you to play around. Noodle it as Angus likes to call it.
Good, and, and one of the things I just wanted to put on for, for just initial discussion with this is whether. You envision, uh. This be, you know, continuing investment of the inoculation program, and if so, whether. You would, uh, at some point see that. Getting, uh, absorbed within the operating budget as opposed to a standalone foreign article. And I, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I think that's a good example of something that when you get to the. Whether it's late November or early December to set your policy direction for the FY twenty-five budget. That's, you know, that would be a good time to say, you know, versus for a service like this, is this gonna become, or is this becoming? A baseline service that needs to be in the operating budget as opposed to like, I suppose.
And your answer's gonna come from when you look at to see how many tier ones actually remain tier one. That's gonna tell you. Right, yeah, what's gonna happen is your, your tier ones are gonna remain hopefully at a certain level and not degrade. You're probably gonna lose, uh, uh, a goodly portion, so this being.
The cost is gonna diminish significantly. And we used only a fraction of that on the original treatment, then we did the assessments, so there's still money left.
That's right.
So, it would be much of that was against it. Yes. Yeah, still, what I'm getting at is you spend money on, on things that weren't necessary treatments. It might only cost ten, fifteen grand every year on the annual due treatments going forward. Remaining seventy-seven.
You don't wanna know the answer to, wow. How it migrated.
Side of that, though, wasn't the initial, wasn't the geographic scope just within the rights of way and not on the other plan, so. You know, if the town wanted to, you know, tackle abandoned ashtrays on, you know, public property. That, that could make, you know, it's, it depends on how, how, you know, aggressive you wanna be on.
Yeah, yeah, you know, the other, uh, that's an interesting idea, but my concern at this point in time, I think that they're going so fast.
Yeah, right.
That, and, and it, they're, you know, they have a lash board everywhere in town, um, and, and, uh, so if we didn't get them this year. You know, if we didn't treat them this year, even if they look good still, I, yeah.
Right, but at, at least, at least you would have data to support the action. Angus's point is valid, I mean, if you could, if you could say, well, you know, there was actually a. Tier double A, you, you know, in other words, only looking tier ones, by the way, were there stronger tier ones or weaker, maybe just find a premium? And may, maybe you do add something to it, but you, obviously from this, that, you know, what Rick just said is true. We came late to the party.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's interesting we came to the party at all, cause almost no other towns did, so even if we only have some success and, and, you know. Your hope is that ten years from now.
Right.
The Emerald Ash Board is, is history here, cause there isn't enough to sustain the, the species, so.
You may actually wanna see if there's a way to, say, say, say that forty of these could be rock solid, say. You know, based on, on this program, then you might wanna go out and see if. You, you still have some of those top, top, top tiers to add in there.
Yeah.
I think we also have to think about getting, you know, taking out the ones that are not healthy.
That's the bigger issue.
Yeah, that's gonna be a lot more expensive than that, yeah.
But that's, that's an easier decision, cause there.
Yeah.
What, yeah.
Imports the beavers now.
Alright, anything else on that? Alright, item U, yay, Rick Parker, yay, you got a large evidence.
So, I gotta go get the rest of it tomorrow, which I.
So, was it just, it wasn't visible from shore?
Yeah, a lot of the times until you get a close, you know, your, your angle, you're looking at such a long, yeah, far there from shore. You're looking at such a long angle, you can't really discern what's there and, and so it isn't until you go. You know, relatively close, you can see what the, how. Yeah, the extent of where they were. I went out there with binoculars beforehand and picked out a couple more and said, oh, I guess there's a little bit more. And, uh, discovered there was much, much more than we expected.
Has the DPW removed them?
Yeah, yeah, uh, which, um, so, somebody from DPW came down and, and, uh, got them and, uh, I got my books back, so I was happy. And, um, and actually tomorrow I talked to Bush on Friday and I'm. Going to borrow a pair of waders from the DPW and I need to find, need to find one backup. So that if I fall down and I'm drowning. Oh, no, we can't do it though, we've been talking about. Oh, yeah, we talked about, that was the original, that was the, yeah, that was the alternate plan, it was, and, and it'll be less damaging in the settling pond. I think to go in there with waders and to try to drag a canoe or kayak and, and then struggle with getting in and out.
Yeah.
Um, in the market and then, you know, so.
So, good thing she noticed it, son.
Oh, yeah, well, and it's clearly, this wasn't the first year, you know, but, um, and, and just because we got what we did get. This year doesn't mean that it's gone.
Right. Made it done, especially the sea was still.
Yeah, yeah, I mentioned so, and, you know, as long as we, uh, stand up for the next few years, I think we can. No, no, they're different, they're not, yeah.
Alright, what can I say? Oh, DOT comments.
Yeah, and that's, it's, uh, really good FYI, we haven't, we're, we're, filed or responded, some of the questions are, are really easy to answer. Uh, you know, the two, uh, adjacent are because the horses don't like rubbing over lines, they're different, I, I thought the comments were quite entertaining.
Why the horseback riders need to cross the street?
So, some of this is, it's, uh, so, we, we, we just got this relatively recently, so we, uh, we actually have a, uh. Zoom meeting with TEC this Friday primarily to plan, plan for the. Event on November ninth, but also will, uh, you know, we sent these around to staff and we'll make sure that we. Provide our comments so that whatever's sent back to the state is, is, you know, reflects our input, uh. Just kind of let me know that's, that's moving forward at the design stage. Uh, so, yeah, we had, uh, attended a meeting, uh, about a month ago at this point, Mark and, uh, Michelle and I went over. New report and, uh. They briefed us on the projects and as well, we're meeting face to face with, uh. State regulators back at the end of May. The project is on, obviously under the jurisdiction of the COMCOM, so.
We'd like to have a lot of issues with that.
Well, yeah, I know, I know, yeah, she, there's been some, uh. Yeah, you mean substantially or process wise, I know there's.
Obviously would significantly impact the wetlands there and that to come for the.
Yeah.
Modified solution.
Okay, X.
Okay, uh, item X, I did actually receive some new information from. Both from our records and from the state and from the resident, actually, also since this one out, so. The, uh, in my email to the resident, I had, actually, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up. Uh, a map, just, just, uh. I was confused and, uh. Perpetuate that. So, as, uh, you know, Rick and Wendy will remember, there was a lot of back and forth on this, but it was all on really short timeline. Like, it was always like new information would come in Thursday or Friday, we'd need to turn it around to fall Monday, it was just like rapid fire, so. In a nutshell, the initial proposal for the over street sign was gonna be located generally around here. Uh, that was not favored and then the, uh, second option that was considered was. Uh, right around here. Uh, the board didn't really favor that option and we pushed them to a third option around here. For some reason, my recollection, the third option was agreed to, it actually was. Right, yeah, so, um. In the last, uh, last week, the, uh, person from DOT actually charged a foot in the sign was in correspondence to Bush. And had a couple of questions about both the, the drop into the fencing that was there and whether the town was consenting to the. Removal of a portion of the fencing, but also, uh, Bush had a question as to, I guess, there's a water main out there. Uh, that he wasn't sure exactly where it was located, but that that could be a potential conflict with the location they have in mind. Uh. So, I. You know, so I got back through all of the back and forth and, and realized that in fact this was the location that was agreed to. But, our understanding at that time was that the immediate offenders have been notified. I don't know if that didn't happen or if it did happen and within the household, it didn't get to the, the particular resident who reached out, but. Um. Uh, I did go back through and there was a representative, you know, was sent an email last October that, you know, that that was gonna happen, so. Uh, anyhow, I reached out to DOT basically to find out, you know. Are we past the point of no return on this, I don't know if the board wants to reconsider it anyway, even if we aren't past the point of no return. But I wanted to just sound out the options, uh, if any, the, uh, so I reached out first to the district engineer. Uh, that person, it turns out, had retired over the summer, so then I reached, uh, reached out to the, uh. Uh, district director, uh, Paul Stedman and I, uh. Uh, tried to reach him by phone, it didn't go through, I left a voicemail earlier today, I got an auto response. Oddly, like an hour after my email, it wasn't right away, but saying he was out of the office from October eleventh through the twenty-seventh, which is next Friday. So, he'll come back on Monday, you know, November. Whatever date that is, first or second, there are probably two thousand emails, ours is gonna be buried in there. But, I did, I did hear back from one of his colleagues, uh. Leave this afternoon and, uh, so he said. Basically, so he sent some correspondence to, you know, reminding that that this had been the location, which I think I had already. I, I knew that. Uh, and he's, you know, raising that there were constructability concerns with the, what I didn't identify as the preferred location. And, uh. Yeah, talking about constructability concerns, so. Uh, the answer to your question for tonight's meeting is MAP DOT stated our concerns with locating the overhead sign on the corner of River Road for all these reasons. As always, we will continue to review the residents, but the location proposed by MAP DOT. Has several benefits and would be located along a wooden, wooden area and steep sides, so it will have a low impact of offenders. Prove the effectiveness of the sign installation. Uh, the intent was to minimize any visual impact of the house located on R twelve sixteen. Uh, which is this one.
Yeah, that's actually the other people's fence that we.
Correct, correct, so, uh. So, he said, I'll get the status of where we are with the signed foundation and application schedules, we'll, we'll get back to that with that information. Not available, that was from, uh, the deputy highway director for district four, so. Yeah, that's to his credit, he definitely, you know, he, he emailed me at five ten today, you know, to try to get us timely information. So, I, I got back to him, I thank him for getting back to us and, uh. And, you know, I, I said tonight, you know, we're not gonna be asked to take any action, it's really just to let you know, there are some questions that have come up about. Uh, the location of the field and we're working with DOT to find out exactly where we are in the process and if we'll pass the point of no return. I did hear from the resident, uh, this, you know, actually while we were competing earlier. And I'll, I'll forward it, I'll put this whenever this is in the next pack, I can forward it tonight if you want, but. Uh, basically, you know, she's making her opinion very clear that, you know, any signage whatsoever. Is not gonna be amenable, uh, you know, signage redundant, it's highly scaled, it's size of lettering. Is inappropriate, uh. That would be terribly unsafe, uh. So, anyhow, so, so I'll, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, right now, kind of, this is just an update. This is kind of flared up as something that, you know, you put it up quite, quite a bit of time on last fall, not resolved. Now, there's questions coming back up, so, again, it's one of these kind of things that just comes up and it doesn't really matter what we put on our priority list, like. You gotta deal with what's in front of you and, and, uh, just between. Thursday, Friday and today, it's, you know, not a small amount of time and, and probably a fair amount more time ahead, so. And part of that also is, you know, I went out there with boy, she, uh, we drove out together, cause I wanted to really make sure I understood everything and. And also giving him the background, so he's gonna be more aware of all the background, so it is just a lot of, you know, his time.
This time would be in the town's right away, though.
Or the, well, it would be within the town's right away. Correct, that's exactly right.
I don't know, if we're, if we're not past the point of no return, I would definitely entertain not doing it, I, I do think it's redundant. Yeah, and it's not, they don't have one on the other side because they didn't want it. So, I, I do the question, I mean, we went with Wayne's recommendation. But, I wasn't thrilled about it.
Just because they don't have a big site doesn't mean that we should be as stupid as that.
I, I don't see, I don't feel like it's gonna serve any purpose, there's plenty of signage there.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to advocate.
Signs don't get stupid, I don't know who said that, but it's very obvious.
Yeah, there were, I guess, some, uh, Rebecca had, had found some, uh. Postings on, on Facebook recently, you probably saw a couple of truck close calls.
People hanging out windows, blocking, it's nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you think that signs are gonna make any difference?
Yeah. It's in your face plate, that's what you say, when I joke at home, but it's ugly, and that's, that's what it will do, is get attention, it'll change people. A percentage, not all, because there's still people that think they can outfox it, now the truck I saw. Said something like thirteen four, now by the way, they have to state their, the bridge says twelve six. So, are they putting in a margin of error?
That's the problem.
That's what these truckers understand.
Yeah.
And if they can, if they drive down the center, the center is higher than the end.
Well, but you don't know that until you get around the corner and see it.
But they all know, they all, I mean.
Usually, usually. Crash fire is the only real solution.
The guys who drive down the center have done it before, that's how you know that they've done it before, it's just they're going out.
Oh, the word is out that it's not actually twelve six, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it is twelve six on the edge.
Well, they know they got clearance somewhere, somebody put out the word, because this truck was thirteen four, making it to our twelve six bridge.
No, no, so, you enter the bridge and, and, and they're angled like that and the center is higher. When you get to the center span, the one that was damaged before, it's twelve six, or very close to twelve six. And it's not angled there, you, you don't get through the center there.
Where's the thirteen four figure, when that was one of the trucks?
Correct, and I, and a video, that I sent to the chief a little month, two months ago, maybe. Yeah, I mean, I, I saw, actually, it was a, a photo that I was taking, I'm driving, my jaw just fell down. Was it one kid in front of the truck locking directly to the guy and the other guy hanging out the window driving?
I think, I think I saw that video. Uh, yeah, I didn't know it was yours.
And, and again, you can't stop those people, but again. Crash fire is the only thing that's ever gonna fix it a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Make it a candle bar.
Alright, so you'll get back to us on where we are with whether it is some traction late or.
Yeah.
Or what the cost would be if we wanted to reconsider. I mean, I feel like there was a lot of publicity.
We did everything we could, we, within, you know, on, on short, you know, turnaround time, we, we didn't do a formal. Mailing, uh. But, but very often, as you recall, that, you know, DOT would give us new information and we expected it. Very quickly, there was never a lead time of like even two to three weeks where you could get something on a future date. I think, actually, when I was going through writing this, you know, to the resident on Friday. I think, actually, when I was going through writing this, you know, to, to resident on Friday, you know, just going back through the number of meetings and, and it was hard for me to keep track of like what you actually voted on because there were so many twisted turns and I was there for it. Uh, so it, it's, uh, it was never like something that was far enough out that you could really do like a formal more of like.
But we got a lot of response.
We did.
I remember holding a long.
We got a lot of response.
In a nutshell, the board approved letting the state put up the sign.
That's correct.
There's been a timeframe that it hasn't happened, it is going to happen.
That's right.
And all of a sudden, the resident is upset.
That's right.
Okay.
But I, but are you still with us or, I know Butch is on, I, cause I know like with the question of the water main and I, I don't know, you know, if we know.
Hello.
Hey, Butch, sorry to keep you.
No, no problem.
I know you've had a really long day.
No, no biggie.
You, you've been listening in, you have uh, any thought on us?
It's, the, 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 it's up to you guys. Uh, the, the drivers, if you, they, they should be able to read, they should know what the signs mean. And they're trying to shortcut. And it's, it's up to the residents and, and what they want and don't want, because you go on Facebook and you hear all kinds of complaints periodically. Um, it's, we gotta do something because the next time it comes up, happens, it might not be fixable. So.
So do you know about the water line, Butch?
Yeah, the water, the water line right now is thirty to forty eight inches off the curb line. Uh, right where they got it marked right now.
Okay.
So it's like, it's like almost right in the middle of the six foot area that they want to, uh, on the outside of the, where they want to put that post at the six foot area. Um, and that, that, uh, Zelinski, Eric, uh, said they're gonna do borings and out there, test borings. And the base could end up being anywhere from ten to fifteen feet deep, depends on the soil. And, yeah. So, and then.
Did he, did he give you any kind of sense of, you know, uh, their timeframe to mobilize?
Uh, if you, I was just in the process of finding the latest email from him. And I am going to send it to you right now. Uh, maybe not, hold on.
No, no, we're not, we're not.
Okay, here it comes. All right, you should be getting it Angus, pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah, he was basically wanting to know if the, uh, we got permission to, uh, they give, get them permission to cut the fence. And as soon as they, and, uh, when is the timeline they could put it in it, was the latest, uh, email I got.
And uh, I think you were copied on the one that we got from, uh, was it Frank, uh?
Yep, yeah, I got that one earlier.
Yeah, so he's, uh, you know, he was gonna look into it a bit more. So, yeah, so, uh, the one Butch just forwarded me from just, just about one o'clock this afternoon. Uh, uh, let's see, oh no, I'm sorry, this is one o'clock on, on, on Friday, yeah, no, I, I had seen this one, uh, uh, this is from uh, Eric Solinsky on the map dot engineer overseeing the contract to install the overhead sign. Mastah's contract to be confirmation of the install of sign inside lay of the road, proposed location, our design requires a six foot half depth in the edge of pavement, pavement. That will require removal of affection of fencing located there. Uh, and then the ask to be copied on any correspondence, so I copied him on what I had sent, uh, early.
I have a good question on that, you're asking about, had, did, Butch said, did they get permission to remove the fence? If it's their fence and the town's right away, shouldn't the town request that they remove the fence back to their private property?
There's fences in probably right the way all over town, um, and stone walls and.
Well, I noticed.
It bears.
It's not in the town's right away.
No?
No.
Um, they actually have had, I know, two occasions where they had to move walls and down previous, way before you, so the fence is there and there's resistance and it's the town's right away and you need to put this post there. That's not the town's obligation.
Well, it would be the town, isn't it, it would be Mastah and, but, you know, the method of kind of removal and, and recreation, I'm sure would, would be something they would wanna work out ahead of doing it work, yeah, um.
The, that fence is completely covered with multi floor rows and stuff like nasty stuff.
Angus, it sounded like they were asking permission to remove the fence, that's what it seemed like.
It, it seems like that, but I think, yeah.
So it gets like Chris does, it gets a little more complicated because then, you know, the, you can tell it's not on the property owner's property, but I don't know that you can give the state permission to go and hold it.
You could request the property on.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. And avoid the conflict.
All right, so you're.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep waiting fully appraised just on what we learn and then, you know, you can determine if you want this agenda for a future meeting, um. I'm assuming it will be on some future meeting, at least for an international update.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand why. I understand, I understand why the property owner doesn't like the idea. Uh, two things, I'm not, you know, I was there with, uh, with Wayne and with, I can't recall the name of the, uh, engineer from Mastah when we were, you know, looking at the location.
Was it John Bragg?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be still winters are tired.
Okay, it could have been that, because he might have been on that page for the sign, I can say that in person. Um, so, um, uh, um, I, I looked at, tried to size up the impact on the house and from down below, and it is quite a bit up there, but there's, there, there were, um, I can't remember what come to care, it was, there was a tree, it was never green, that to me was gonna block a substantial amount of the view of, of.
I think Angus had that on.
Yeah, um, and, and, um, yeah, um, you know, of course, depending upon where it is exactly, but, but, um, which did, just, it struck me that there would be limited visual impact on, it, it looked from the road. Limited visual impact from the house and, you know, the stuff grown up on that side of the house is just, it's filled with invasives and it, it's not a place that people are spending a lot of time looking out from their house in the pier down below. And, and, um, that's the first thing, and then the second thing is, you know, I mean, we're really talking about a huge public issue. If that bridge goes out again, we should be doing what we can reasonably to prevent, you know, to minimize the, the risk. And, um, if this, if that bridge goes again, and it's because somebody came from Eric died, you know, and, and we didn't put the sign up, there, there's no proof that that would have stopped it, but.
Collectively, there was a ton of anger about the bridge being out.
Right, right.
That's what I recall.
Yeah, it's a huge, it's a huge deal.
Big deal.
Yeah.
All right. I'm just gonna stay right tonight.
Right, right.
Um, update the letter after.
Yeah, this is the floating round of the background, uh, so to speak, and, uh, you know, kind of came, came over the finish line with a change to the flood map, so just, uh, include this in the packet to make you aware.
So is it just the area near the high school that's been remonished, or is it the whole coastline?
So we actually got, uh, copies of a similar letter to, with changes in neighboring communities as well, I didn't put it in the packet, but we did get. Yeah, no, I think it, there were, there were other communities affected, so, uh, we have copies in my office, I can send those around just if, if you're curious.
No.
Uh, but yeah, it seems like there were broader changes.
Kind of hard to make sense of all this.
Yeah.
They, they have a website where you can see the old and the proposed new. Yeah, I did that down in Eaton, so you could, you could see where, where the changes were. You, you guys have the ability to accept or contest this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's just the area by the high school. Where it was focused there, yeah.
Angus, you know, to be true, that, that, they, they have, they have the ability to go online and see the.
I think that may have passed, because I think we, that's why I tell you, this has been going on for, for quite a while, through Sam, you know, he, he, we get copies, they're sent to the planning board, they're sent to Hong Kong, they're sent around, uh.
So this has been through that approval process?
I, I believe so, yeah.
But then, I think you get to see the old versus the new, if you're inclined to look, they, they, there is interest in what, what changes.
You know, you can see that, that, that stream that flows, yeah, right from the bottom, that's to the bottom of the video, and what's it going, heading to the right, that's that stream that the, um, who, what was working on trying to deal with these bases in there and plenty of stuff in there.
Yeah. Okay, Peter, did I?
Um, okay, go ahead, Chris. Um, someone you talked about, but it's never really been, again, uh, to get the FinCom to do an analysis of the free cash versus the stable donation fund. We have to make a formal request of that at some point. Uh, number two, long L B A P R playbook, I'd like to get an update on that. Uh, number three, ARCA funds, Wendy had made a comment or request of Rick, uh, as to how do we determine when you move on from those funds to use them for other purposes, and I think we have to look at that. Maybe a lot. Um, yeah, so I, um, just because we're in there looking at these other meetings that were scheduled, I put a note in a while back and I gotta figure out what to do. Um, anyway, essentially, there was a reminder to bring it up at a select board meeting, um. There we go. So, we're meeting topic regarding congressional, congressional invitation on this bit project, potential FY twenty four community project funding, so every year this sneaks up on us in February or so, and we say, boy, I wish we were asking for money for that, that street bridge. Um, so, um, you know, that's like three months off, four months off.
What's the name of this?
Uh, it's the, uh, it's a, a letter we get typically with like a two, two weeks notice, and it's an email with like two weeks notice, max. Here, do a thousand hours of work, you got two weeks. Um, you know, it's a congressional invitation to submit projects for potential FY twenty four community project funding, yeah. And, um, and the question is, does it make sense for us to reach out to us at home? Uh, and to, um, you know, the ones that presented before and, and to.
Can I get an advanced copy?
Right, well, yeah, I mean, maybe they could, I mean, that's a, that's a sure way to minimize their work is wait till the last minute, but there's no possible waiting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was.
I think that's a great suggestion, because it does, it does preponderance.
Right, yeah.
I think it's, you know, it's debatable how, how.
It might also be able to give. Right.
On the Congress right now, but, but it's still, it's a good.
I had thought about that. Presumably at some point. Nah. Right.
Um, I, I don't know that we need to discuss this at a future meeting, but in going through the select board policies, I saw the one about electric equipment. It's during this fiscal year, and I just wondered if you had a conversation with Boaz about that, so he knew where our policy.
Yeah, that's a good point, um. I don't know that he is, I, I think he probably is, but I don't, I mean, Wayne and I talked about it, and I think he had talked with, um, uh, you know, his team, um, back two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was part of what prompted the decision to, to go for an electric vehicle for the, uh, the pickup truck that, um, with it, that goes to ground, go and ground. Yeah, but, yeah, it's good to make. Or maybe I didn't talk with on that, his.
I know, he's on that, but he.
Oh, right, oh, right.
I hope so.
Just said John actually was very cross about the truck, by the way.
Yeah, yeah.
He said they ran down to like zero to see kind of how long.
No, not all of it, to say, like, to see what would happen.
And it starts telling you to turn off like the radio with the truck, and then, and then, it actually, he said it worked out really well and it charged up and it really does get to a certain point.
Yes.
So who uses the truck primarily?
John, John, the other truck.
Yeah. Cause this other one literally had.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's right, kind of reminded me of my old Volkswagen Beetles from fifty years ago.
And it's a beautiful truck, I, I, I had asked, uh, once they get the insignias on it, to get a nice photo of it parked in a nice location, we press release, because I, I will pick the paper around picture out of it.
Yeah.
Cause it's all electric, it's very, very nice looking vehicle.
What I'm waiting for is when, um, the highway for W is out somewhere working and they need power tools. And they need them quickly and John drives by and somebody realizes, oh, we can just plug into that truck. And, and, you know, and voila, they have their, their portable power source wherever they happen to be.
That was funny.
Wow, you know, they were, uh, I, um, from what Wayne said when he first introduced the idea to, um, you know, to, to his team. What was then his team, um, uh, everybody was pretty excited about it.
Mm-hmm.
They were very positive about the idea.
So is the, if John is just local short trips, is that, is that used for that kind of vehicle?
Um, well, I mean, you don't wanna, you know, he could drive to New York City and back, but you'd have to stop a couple times, um, to, to recharge, you know, which take longer than sticking it, you know, a gas tank in your, in your cell.
Okay.
All right, Butch.
Yeah, the, uh, the truck goes about two hundred and forty miles on a charge, two forty to two sixty. And when it gets down to about twenty five miles, it, uh, the warning bells go off that it needs a charge. And it usually takes, from that point on, somewhere is around ten to ten and a half hours to get back up to a full charge. Um, and he goes about two weeks on a, on a charge. So.
Thank you.
Uh, right now, uh, I sent Angus an email, uh, I don't know if we can let them know, but it's got a, it's, it has a recall on it. And it's, uh, over at Walls right now, it went today, it's gonna be worked on tomorrow. Um, but other than that, it's been, uh, you know, good service and it is, it's a, it's a neat truck, you know? So.
So have you, uh, have you plugged anything into any of the outlets yet, have you had an opportunity to actually use it for a power source?
We haven't, um, it's been mostly John using it, I don't know if he, he has for anything, but we haven't had the, uh, opportunity yet.
Okay, we're in for a.
Thanks, Chris.
I, I think given an hour.
Was there anything we need to, uh?
Uh, I mean, if we wanted to convene very briefly, uh.
I should just send an update of where we're at.
Sure, yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, you have to adjourn.
I think I must adjourn, was that gonna be? Recession.
Recession. Second.
Okay, I read, I. Okay, read I.